Twenty five. Everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we'll do first the minutes of September seventeenth. At our last meeting, I had requested that people, if they had changes to those, to send the changes to Candy. I don't think she received any of the changes, but um I think we have just figured out this dollar amount on page three. So we just have to change the dollar amount to one thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars and twenty cents in the first paragraph and in the motion. And so I'll make a motion to approve the November or the September seventeen minutes with that with those corrections.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the September seventeen minutes? Aye. Uh, October first minutes. Um, so the minutes that are printed here, I don't see the non-public, but I think there were in the drive.
Yeah, it's you like the entire packet went in the drive.
Really?
Like there were, yeah, there were a bunch of things like added individually, but like you forward them to the packet.
The only individual thing that wasn't that I saw that wasn't the package was this.
Yeah, so we, so generally our drive will have all the individual documents. Um, and then the the public packet is published on like generally Friday or Monday. I wouldn't rely on that though, because there are things that come in after that.
Yeah.
And there's non-public things that go in the drive that wouldn't go in that packet.
Okay.
So not everything in your drive is going to be public access.
Right, yeah, so that's what I mean is on the drive typically has like one that is literally just this front page.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's another one.
Yeah, that is in there. But that's not the full packet, because I know things have been added since that was published.
There might be, I wonder if the labeling system that we're using maybe is unclear, and I can work with Lexi to adjust the labeling.
Oh, this is, this is the only one that I had noticed, so maybe, uh.
Okay. Maybe she did something different though, and I can ask her.
Yeah, I would say I'm gonna, yeah, with a different device.
So, I bet. Well, she redone it, um. So she was out on Friday and I tried to do it myself. So that may have been my own user error being unfamiliar with how to create that.
Oh.
So I.
I was just making sure.
It very well could have been my fault that that packet didn't look the same as before, so she redid it yesterday.
Okay.
And reposted it because she fixed all my problems.
Okay.
So, thank goodness for her.
Um, so the minutes that we have printed don't have the non-public session, but I'm fairly sure the minutes on in the drive do.
Okay.
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 Um.
On the, on the drive, it starts, uh, the minutes themselves are within the packet. I'll look.
The non-public. Probably not within the public packet.
I don't.
It's not in the, it's not in the.
No, I don't see it. I can double check with um my admin assistant and make sure that that can send us. We can table those minutes.
Yeah, we'll have to table those for them, because it doesn't have. Did, wait, no, we didn't have a non-public session, did we? Wait, yes, we did.
We can table it and confirm.
Okay. So that way, yeah. All right, we are on to public comments. Don't everybody rush up at once. Any takers? Okay, oh, yeah, please.
Um, my name is Julia Seven, I live on my throat. And I just wanted to come again, because I know that budget is obviously a hot topic. And so I wanted to come and voice my support for the programs that we currently have in the school. Um, and say that I don't have a proposed solution that would not feel bad, but um the list I've seen circulated has a lot of things that I strongly disagree with. Um, I personally benefited from having the pre-K program accessible. Um, as a working mom, it is useful, um, and I think that's something that gets a lot of uh push, I don't know, uh, it it's difficult with the part-time, but it was still significantly helpful for my son. And in order to have access to resources, I don't think that it would be beneficial budget-wise to remove the pre-K program anyway. Um, I also think cutting kindergarten to half-day would be really unfortunate for all the kids, um, and also for working parents. Um, I don't currently have any children in high school, but I would imagine cutting busing would be really stressful for most families. Um, and I know we talked in detail about the the IA program and the arts and art and music and how and NP, um, and how important they are. And I just really think that the current program is terrific and I appreciate all of the educators that I've had the experience of working with and love hearing the happy stories that come home from my kindergartner.
And that's it. Awesome, thanks so much. Other public comments? All right, uh, board discussion regarding public comments. Thanks for your comments. Um, all right, agenda review.
Do we have any non-public? Not that I know of.
Okay.
Can I suggest that we move C I P down to the information mall?
Yes.
At our next meeting, it'll probably be immediate business.
Okay. Um. Cool, agenda review. All right, we are on to New Hampshire School Board Association presentation. If we could welcome Mr. Christina up and join to join us.
Thank you, Kendra. Um, good evening all. Uh, my name is Barrett Christina. I'm the Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Been asked to do our roles and responsibilities training for the school board. Um, before I start, Kendra and Jess, I see you've only got three of the five board members here. Your choice on here, it makes no difference to me. Would it be, would you be, would you prefer if we did it when all five board members were here? It is not out of my time. This is not out of the way for me at all. I can come back at any time. I live in Dover. I work in Concord, so on my way back, it's a right-hand turn and five minutes down, five minutes down the road. It's completely your meeting, the board's meeting. I'm just wondering if it would be more beneficial when all five board members are here. I totally understand. Things come up, travel for work, you get sick, the kids aren't sick, then the ballgame, whatever it might be. So I just wanted to put that out while I was kind of paying attention that there's only the three of you. I prefer, my personal preference is to do it when the full board is here, so everybody's hearing the same message.
We did talk about that, and I think it was, it got complicated, because there were going to be the next several meetings where we were going to be missing a member.
Okay, I mean.
Just due to special lives and things like that.
How, I mean, how far out and, not that I want to ask the board members to come out for an extra evening, but you know, if there's also possibility you could schedule it on an evening without a regularly scheduled board meeting for forty-five minutes even. Again, I just, I'm happy to go through the presentation. I just want it to be worth my time and collectively the board's time.
It was in the November, December that.
If, yes, I think it was into December.
Yeah, and it is recorded.
Yeah, I mean, we do record them.
Okay.
And I would expect that board members watch board meetings, that they are not attending.
We're watching, sure. Okay.
I, I mean, certainly if they have questions.
There's always an opportunity to follow up. It's a different dynamic though, it's all like, you're, you're, by all means, it's, it's the board's meeting, I'm, you're inviting a guest, whatever you would like to do as far as.
Okay. Right. Do you guys have thoughts?
I, I'm gonna be missing the next meeting. So, you know, for me, I'd like to, it's, I, I totally get it.
Sure, okay, that's. Yeah. I'm happy to, um, I'm, I'll, why don't I go through it for, I, I maybe do an abridged version?
Yeah.
And, and then for maybe a half hour or so. And then if you want to invite me back at a time that may be more conducive for the full board, um, by all means, for a service organization, I, 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 I serve with the pleasure of the board, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Did you have something you wanted me to project or no?
I do not, no, thank you though.
Yep, I did make copies.
Let's say we have the presentation in the.
Yeah, so, um, uh, with that, I, I, good evening. Again, my name is Barrett Christina, Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Association. Um, I want to thank the Deerfield School Board for inviting me out to do a, a quick overview of, um, of school board roles and responsibilities, speaking with Jess. Um, there's some, uh, some new people on the board, I guess, from last March and maybe from maybe the March before that. So kind of a green board, if you will. I know I was out here, was it three years ago, two or three years ago, Jess? Or I'm sorry, I, I.
Yeah, yeah, it was right after I joined the board, and I'm the longest-tenured person on the board.
Yeah. And all three years, right? Okay, so anyway, um, uh, so I appreciate the opportunity to, to come on out. We do this presentation, um, dozens and dozens and dozens of ti- of times a year. It's a basic, um, sort of school board roles and responsibilities where we talk about what are, what are the statutes and Department of Education will say about sort of the role of the school board? Compare and contrast those, um, about, you know, the role of the superintendent and the school administration. Um, and then the middle is sort of, is sort of best practices. So, um, everybody has a copy, copy of the, of the handout. I'm gonna do a quick abridged version then. I can do, you know, anywhere, I've done these before. They last for two and a half hours, depending on the questions and the Q and A and the usually we're doing that when it's two and a half hours outside of a regularly scheduled board meeting, when you've got policies and, and whatnot and other else to adopt, so. Um, but getting into the materials, three core principles that NHSBA advocates for. I'm starting, I'm on slide two now. Um, first is RSA one eighty-nine colon one dash eight. There's a statute, RSA one eighty-nine, that talks about the duties and responsibilities of schools. Now, that statute has sort of mushroomed or ballooned the last ten years where it's a hodgepodge of things, but um, the, the, the first aspect of that statute, it says the, the purpose of school shall be the duty of school board to provide at district expense elementary and secondary education to all pupils who reside in the district. That's the purpose, the, the, and the sole purpose and the primary function of school boards, to make sure that the children in Deerfield are getting an education, right? Now, obviously, we know that every community has multiple constituencies, right? We just had a parent come up and speak. You've got students, you've got staff members, you've got their maybe a municipal budget committee, sometimes they have to deal with the, 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 the select board on per, on, on certain issues. Um, you've got taxpayer rights groups, so, um, you know, you've got a lot of constituencies that you have to consider and a lot of voices that you have to take into consideration when you're developing your budget and offering program. But what I often recommend for school boards is that when you've got a tough decision, whether or not it's budgetary programming, an initiative that's before the board, and you've heard all the, from all the constituents, and you've, you've got to make a decision, ask yourself, how does this impact kids? How is this going to impact the education that we're providing here, you know, here in Deerfield? And to some degree, let that be your guide. Now, obviously, there are other considerations. Cost, timing, programming, resources, power, so on and so forth. If you can always at least ask yourself, if we move in this direction, or if we accept this, how is it going to impact kids? If we don't accept this, or we don't move in that direction, how are we going to impact kids? Questions about that? All right, second core principle, the collective authority of a school board. Um, it's important for school board members to, to recognize and, and realize that individual board members do not have any authority or any particular power to act on behalf of the board, speak on behalf of the board, and do anything relative to the board. The only time that the board can act itself is when the five of you are at the, at the table at a duly-called meeting under the right-to-know law, where you discuss, deliberate, and ultimately vote on, on a particular, particular issue, whether it's approving minutes, approving expenditure, approving programming, adopting a policy, ratifying a collective bargaining agreement, all the various votes and, and, and matters that come before the board that need board action. No board, no individual board member has any, any specific authority, um, a- as an individual, collective authority of the board. There are some cave, caveats and carve-outs for that. The board can delegate individual authority, or de- delegate authority to an individual board member. For example, you probably have a policy that gives the board chair certain authorities and responsibilities. Set the agenda with the superintendent, sign certain documents on behalf of the, of the board, make spokesperson, whatever the case may be, call the meeting to order. But again, that was the board, what, collectively adopting a policy, saying, our board chair has, has this authority to act on behalf of the board? Questions about that? Collecting authority versus individual authority? All right. Core principle number three, um, where we spend most of, a lot, a good portion of, of the bulk of the presentation. Um, uh, uh, sorry, moving, moving forward. Governance, not management, okay? Two different domains. The superintendent manages the school district. The school board governs the school district. And how does the school board govern the school district? Policy, budget, strategic planning, um, those are the three big things. Some other ones that we'll talk about in, in a few more slides. And the superintendent manages the school district. Now, when I say manages the school district, I conceptualize that as the day-to-day responsibilities of, of, of running, of running the corporation, the, 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 the business of the school that we, that we have here. Um, it's not in the PowerPoint slide, but I sent Jess a sort of a, a longer, like a white paper guide. It's called like the role, the, the roles and responsibilities, the long form of, of this basically. If you look, I think it's on page maybe eleven, twelve, thirteen, you know, you don't have to jump to it per se, but we've included in that statute RSA, or in that, in that handout, a copy of statute RSA one ninety-four, um, dash C colon four. And that statute talks about the superintendent duties, all the things that the superintendent is responsible for um, in, in managing a school district. And it's everything from payroll, compliance with grants, compliance with federal laws, making sure that your non-discrimination laws are being adhered, are adhered to, bringing policy recommendations to the school board. Oversight, um, and evaluation of all of the employees within the school district. The real day-to-day type of operations of a school district. So, you know, by example, for example, if the boiler blows up in this school, and a parent perhaps calls you, you don't have any authority to call the, the maintenance guy to, to tell him to get in to fix it, right? That's a, that's, that's a management responsibility. You know, the, calling the, you know, the transportation company, because one bus is always ten minutes late, superintendent's responsibility. The day-to-day operations of students fall on, fall on the, uh, fall on the superintendent. With oversight by the school board though, and guidance by the school board, where does that guidance come from? I'm, I'm slipping over, slipping over a couple of slides now. Um, I've talked about some of the management functions. I'm on slide six. Um, you know, I, I, so, but on, on slide seven, um, the oversight of the school board, to make sure that the school board or that, that the superintendent is doing what the school board, um, the school board desires. Um, an important function of, of the school board in your, in your governance responsibilities is evaluation and oversight of the, uh, of the superintendent. Um, the evaluation, I bring up the evaluation aspect, um, because it's a challenge for every school board in this state. You know, we've done some webinars, we have some, some, some documents and sample evaluation forms and, and whatnot that I can provide you, but I will tell you, and I don't know what it was like, um, you know, before, before, you know, Jess got here, what your evaluation, you know, uh, system was like. I, I probably asked Patty at one point or another, but, um, what I would often say is that with a brand-new superintendent, um, you know, you may need to tweak your evaluation process a little bit. And I know sort of just the, the general makeup of S A U fifty-three is unique in, in and of itself, where you've got co-superintendents and, uh, but, um, you know, I've often found that, in, in my experience, that, um, evaluation models and systems are best developed locally. I can give you a rubric, I can give you a matrix, I can give you a scoring sheet. I've got probably ten on file. Some of them are okay. None of them are great. If I had the magic form, I'd give it to you. But there are too many variables, right? There's just way too many variables. A first-year superintendent is going to be evaluated much differently than somebody that's been a, the superintendent for fifteen or twenty years. It's the reality of it. A superintendent in a K, K through eight school district here, right, K through eight district, um, is going to be evaluated much differently than a school district that has five buildings, K through twelve, and six principals, and then every, and every, and everything else, so. Um, to the extent that you haven't, I should have stepped back a little bit too. Um, the primary, um, not the primary, the right way to say this, the starting point for a superintendent evaluation is goal setting. I presume that you did some goal setting over the summer.
We are tonight.
We are tonight, fantastic, yeah, that, that, that's, that's, yeah. You know, I, we often say, you know, try and start with the goal setting, especially when you have a new, a new superintendent coming in. I presume that you do some sort of entry plan to some degree?
Sure.
Okay, um, all right, anyway, you're doing the goal setting tonight, so at least you're on, you're on, on top of it that way. Though, that goal setting is to some degree going to be what the evaluation is modeled off of, right? You know, you set the goals, um, or else what are you evaluating on, you know, which is, the part of the conversation is, you know, especially with a brand-new superintendent, everybody, the five board members and the superintendent have to be on the same page as to what is being evaluated, how is it being evaluated? You know, are different things more important than other things? So, okay, you've got five goals, just picking a random number. These two might be crazy, crazy important for the school district, right? These other three are important, but perhaps less important, so are you gonna weigh the other, other two first? I'm just saying, these are parts of the conversation that the, that the board needs to have.
Yeah, we had that exec board. So we did do that, but that was at our executive board level.
Through the S A U.
Through the S A U, and then it's supposed to be trickled out through each of the districts, so yes.
That's also another unique challenge in sort of the, the New Hampshire system. You have one superintendent, you know, covering four or five school districts. Your goals here in district X may be different than the goals in district Y. That could put a superintendent in a, in a tough spot, which is why you gotta have these conversations, conversations early on.
How do boards typically, um, evaluate? In the sense of how do we get the information to evaluate, right? Like, the information that I have is from Jess, and I trust that Jess is being honest with me, but how do I
Yep.
functionally
Right.
understand, because, you know, we sort of, we have policies that we don't talk directly to staff about, you know, X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, that, that's always the, that's always one of the challenges and a, a common question from school board members. How do I know if the superintendent is doing his or his or her job, right? So, um, so a couple of different things. The reality is superintendents are being evaluated twenty-four seven, right? By, not just by the school board, but by, by, by the people sitting behind me as well too. What I will say is that as members of the community, you're gonna hear things, right? The ballgame, the supermarket, the holiday concert, whatever it might be. If somebody brings a concern to you, to say about whatever it might be, you call Jess and you just say, look, I'm not gonna say who, this is, who it was, but, you know, I've heard this concern. Can you, can we, can you tell me about it now? Do we need to sit down and have a cup of coffee about it, whatever the case may be? I also am a huge advocate of when you're doing an annual evaluation, you do not wait until May to do it. You know, excuse me, so you're gonna do some goal setting tonight, right? Before the holidays. You go into a non-public session, fifteen minutes, half hour after a meeting, Jess, give us an update. Where are we on these goals? I presume part of the aspect of goal setting is benchmarking too, right? Three months, six months, twelve months, you know, twenty-four months, if you've got a two-year contract, whatever the case may be. Um, some boards do what is called, you may be familiar with the, the term, a three-sixty evaluation, where you're getting a whole view, you're surveying staff and, and, and parents and communities. I've got mixed feelings about that. Um, you know, in a small district like this, if maybe Jess has some, some interaction with the, with the kindergarten teacher, probably not a lot, though, right? So in a smaller district, maybe there's more interaction, in a large district, absolutely not. So is it even worth asking, you know, while this kindergarten teacher's opinion may be important for this building, and what's going on in kindergarten, it may not be pertinent to what's being, to how we're evaluating the superintendent. Um, you know, I've seen this, some districts do what I'll call a modified three-sixty, where they will, you know, it's gone anonymously, again, there's risks with this, where they may interview S A U staff and say building-level principals, the people that are having the most interaction with your superintendent. Um, you know, again, in a small district, you know, one comment, you know, you're not necessarily gonna share the comments with Jess, but, you know, you gotta be mindful of the confidentiality that comes along with that, which comes along with that as well too. Um, I will say, I don't want to sound like a salesperson, but NHSBA is, we're looking at re, um, not re, but basically introducing, um, some programming, um, probably for fee, um, but with a couple consultants that we work with that are long, have been long, they're retired now, but they were long-serving New Hampshire superintendents to come in and talk to boards for a couple hours on how to get started, and then, you know, if they want to follow up, you know, additional costings of that nature, so. Um, if you want to have that conversation amongst yourselves, you know, I can have an informal conversation with you guys as well too. And we're not talking big money by, by, by any means, but, so, you know, um, other stuff is going to be, you know, sort of what directives you give your superintendent. You know, so in top, on top of, you know, doing goal setting, I presume that's gonna be somewhat of a joint conversation. Jess has her ideas, the board's gonna have their ideas, right? Um, and then, you know, hopefully there's some cohesion and, and mix with them. You know, so the part of that's going to be, you know, that's why you've got to monitor the goals and why you, you benchmark the goals and you need to check in on every, you know, I say don't, you know, in a normal, let's, let's say you had started, let's say you've done your goal setting in July, let's just, you know, use that. I would have said, you know, check in around Halloween, you know, check in before the holidays, do, do these mini check-ins every two months, you know? Um, you know, where you go into a non-public session, so, so Jess, you've been on the job for three months now, we set these goals, how's it going? What's, do you need any supports from us? Do we need to pivot and modify anything? Because you got it and you realized what we had talked about three months ago in July isn't necessarily working. And it's, why is it not working? That could be a thousand different things. The principal took, you know, with no notice. Um, pandemic hits, you know, it, there could be a thousand different reasons why. Um, the other aspect too with the, what I, what I say with the evaluation is that if, you know, there are a couple different aspects to. So let's say you, as a board member, get a phone call from a constituent who's got a kid in the second grade, and it may even be your neighbor, right? You know, um, and so you, there, there's something going on in the second-grade classroom. You follow your proper protocols, you follow your proper policies, you don't have any authority as an individual board member, right? To, to call that second-grade teacher or evaluate that second-grade classroom, what do you do? Policy K E, K E B, talks about, you talk with the parent, did you go through the chain of communication? Did you talk to the teacher yet? Did you talk to the principal yet? But you give Jess a heads up and you say, Jess, Mrs. Smith from second-grade classroom, call me with this complaint. I trust you'll take care of it, right? And Jess may delegate it to the principal or a special ed director in the building, depending on what the nature of the issue is. So a week goes by, that parent calls you back and says, you told me the superintendent was going to be calling me back and nobody called me back. So you get on the horn and you call Jess and say, Jess, you know, what's going on here? Two diff, so that's one scenario. The other scenario, you get a call from the sec, from a parent in that second-grade classroom. The next day you get a different call from a different parent about this, about this, about the same, about the same classroom, right? So you get three, four, or five phone calls from parents in the same classroom, and you call Jess and you say, I don't know what's going on in that classroom, Jess, but I've heard from like ten parents in the last two weeks. You gotta check in on it. If the problem has not been rectified or resolved, or there's still problems, you're gonna hear from those parents, right? Either formally or informally. They're gonna pull you, if they're gonna call you or you know you, they're gonna pull you aside at Hanford. They're gonna pull you aside at the ballgame, or wherever the case may be, because you're parents and you've got kids in the district, and that's how you know people in the community. So, and, and does that help? I know, I mean, there's a lot of aspects to this as, 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 as well too. That's sort of a long-winded response, so. There's no easy way to do it. There's a little bit of blind faith, you know? That's sort of a long-winded response, so there's no easy way to do it, there's a little bit of blind faith, you know?
Right.
So.
And can I just clarify what, um, I hadn't, it hadn't occurred to me that we would do it in a non-public session. What, what, like what category would it, would it be?
I think you can do it under A or C.
Okay, that's what I.
B is the hiring, right, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
Yeah, so A is talks about the the.
Dismissal, promotion, compensation.
I mean, it relates to some degree compensation, and C is the reputation provision, I think either one of those, you 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 can say.
That's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions about about superintendent evaluation?
Yeah, no, I, we need to sort of discuss that as a board, because I don't think we typically had a great evaluation system beforehand.
We hear that from a lot of board, you're not alone, not that that helps you.
Yeah, I think the, um. The the executive board has been trying to figure out a strategy for the whole SAU and that sort of fizzled out, because each of our districts has their own. Issues, so we couldn't find a uniform evaluation.
I had this, you know, I I I haven't done training for Pembroke in a number of years, but I've had this train, this conversation with them when Patty was there. I've had this conversation with the Chichester and Allentown boards when Peter Warburton was there. I've had this conversation with Jack and and the Epsom board, so you've just got a unique makeup. Um, you know. Other multi-district SAUs. One of the ways they do it, um, is that they they create an E-committee, essentially the chairs of all the. Of all the, of all the boards, each individual board will complete their own evaluation that goes to their board chair. And then the board chairs get together with sort of aggregated information and data and have that conversation. But I mean, do you guys ever, do you, do you ever have any encounters with Jack?
Um, at the full school board meeting, no, and at executive board, whichever one goes to executive board.
Okay, so there, so a little bit, but, I mean, but probably not enough to evaluate.
Oh, no, I've not, I see it maybe twice a year.
Yeah, no, right, exactly, so.
But it is, it is an interesting, um, problem.
Yeah.
Problem, quote unquote, because there are five districts and we really only work with Jeff, for instance.
Exactly, no, I know how to, I know how the the structure works.
Like, the decision-making at the SAU level is interesting, because one district doesn't have that much say.
Right.
Right, in in how things happen, because it's relying on all all the districts.
Right, exactly. Questions about that? No, okay, um. On slide eight, and we've got a, I apologize, it's like in four-point font, I can't remember myself. There is a larger version of this in the, in that large handout, I forget what page it's on. This is a nice little cheat sheet, um, school board governance and management. We've got sort of the topic here, and I just wanna be mindful of your time, so keep my phone out, to track the time. Um, on the, you know, the left-hand column, sort of the general topics, policy and decision-making, board meetings, budget, so on and so forth. And then the middle column, the school board's governance responsibilities under each of those topics. And then the superintendent's management responsibilities and under each of those topics. The most important thing that I think this slide shows and this little chart shows is, you know, we get questions at NHSBA all the time. From board members, from new superintendents, oftentimes when we're at the legislature. Um, you know, and who, and and, you know, given the Claremont issue, we've certainly got a lot of que. Whose responsibility is this? Who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for this? Who's responsible for that? Everything that goes on is a shared responsibility. Every single thing that goes on is a shared responsibility. There are budgetary aspects that fall on the responsibility of the school board. There are budgetary aspects that fall on the responsibility of the central office and the BA and the superintendent. There are educational decisions that fall on the responsibility of the superintendent. There are instructional and curricular decisions that fall under the responsibility of the school board. Most of those are gonna be policy and budget-related, but there's still a responsibility there, so. You know, if any of your constituents ask, well, who's responsible for the budget, who's responsible for this? Everything is a shared responsibility. Some is weighed a little bit more heavily towards the board, others a little bit weighed more heavily towards the administration. And a whole bunch of school districts are smack dab in, smack dab in the middle, where it depends on the nature of the board and the nature of the superintendent and. And the size of the district is is as well too, the smaller the board, the smaller, or so not the smaller the board, but the smaller the school district. In my experience, the more the board may be involved in sort of, you know, employee decisions and who's hiring this and who's hiring that and. So on and so forth, but, you know, obviously in Manchester, the superintendent is not hiring. You know, or the school board and the superintendent are not hiring every paraprofessional. In the district for crying out loud, that they'd have nothing else to do other than sit there and interview, you know, two thousand paraprofessionals all year long, so. Questions? All right. Um, I'm gonna do the real bridge version now too, I'm not gonna go through all these slides. I'm gonna go through the slides, but not with all the, all the, all the boards. I'm getting into sort of the core, core roles and responsibilities of school boards and core duties of school boards. Uh, foremost is policymaking. School boards are by and large a policymaking body. Um, I didn't look at your agenda, but, you know, most school boards will have a couple policies on the agenda, on on every single agenda, whether. Yeah, I see everybody nodding, whether or not it's adopting a policy, reviewing policies. Going over a policy, asking questions about policies. Why is policy so important? Well, first of all, this New Hampshire statutes and the New Hampshire Department of Education regulations. Put policymaking as a primary responsibility of 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 the school board, both in statute. Um, the parental bill of rights just came out, school boards have to have multiple policies, you know, within the parental bill of rights. Um, the the minimum standards for public education, the ED three oh sixes that the state board just adopted. Just adopted, moving on a year now, in December, there are probably twenty-five or thirty policies. Just in that document that are required for school boards to have on 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 the books. Attendance and absenteeism, homework, how homework, you know, impacts grades. Competencies, absentee and truism, bullying. Um, uh, you know, uh, uh, and and a whole host, how, you know, how many credits for graduation? I don't know, that's not a concern here, but, you know.
We have a policy in that.
Yeah, um, you know, any, anything, anything like that, so. And why is policy so important? Well, it establishes the rules, guidelines, and expectations for who? Everybody, everybody in your community. Think of your policy manual, section B, who does that deal with? The school board, you've got policies that regulate yourself, authority of the board chair, right? How to deal with right-to-know law requests, board staff communications. Um, you know, perhaps some rules of order are in there, you've got policies that regulate yourself. Section C is what? Administration, you've got policies that that regulate the administration. Um, you've got policies that talk about staff expectations. You've got policies that talk about student expectations. Intermingled in some of those, you've got policies that may deal with parental expectations. Section K deals with sort of dealing with the community at large, public information programs, community involvement. Chain of communication, when you get complaints from members of the public. Um, and when I say policy and when I say the entire community, I literally mean the entire community. We talked about all the constituencies that school boards have when I, when I started, right? When I say who do your policies impact, you would, you know, most people just, I don't know, staff and students, right, the people that are in the building all day long. Let me ask you, do you rent, you have a, do you have a gymnasium in this, and do you rent that out to like the town rec league and to, yeah?
I rent it.
But you have, but you have a user agreement, you have a user, that's a policy, right? And you probably have policies about other organizations, the Boy Scouts and the Flower Club can come in and and use space. Um, policies on visitors to school, right? You know, everything from, you gotta sign in, you gotta show an ID, you gotta get a badge, we're gonna lock you in the vestibule. And somebody will escort you across the building, I've been in some SAU offices where they scanned my driver's license, so. I'm not just putting John Doe or Barrett Christina on a piece of paper. You know, they've got a record that Barrett Christina entered the building at ten fifteen AM. First was, you know, because he had an appointment with the superintendent or or the board chair, whatever, whatever the case may be, so. When I say your policies impact the community at large, I I really mean that they impact your community at large, that's why policies are so, are so important. The second, um, you know, primary role and responsibility of of school boards is to. Set and establish the budget and provide budget oversight. Um, and when I say set the, set the, set the budget, that's a little. Not entirely accurate, the voters ultimately set the budget, right, when they vote on it at your annual meeting. And you have, you have a BudCon here by chance, do you have a budget committee, municipal budget committee? So, they're actually setting the budget that's going on the warrant and is being discussed at the, uh, at the, uh, the budget hearing and and things of that nature. But the board still has budgetary responsibilities and budgetary oversight, even follow, following the annual meeting. Um, I presume that you are are signing off, you've got a policy and provisions for signing off on the manifest. You know, the law says you gotta have two board member, at least two board members do it. Some boards do it at a board meeting, other times they do it, they swing by after work or whenever, you know, you're able to to come over and do it. Um, I presume, I hope from time to time, you're getting, um, uh, you know, uh, reports from from the business office. All right, you know, it's, we're over on this line item, we're under on that line item. Um, there's a transfer of line item authority that 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 boards have, where you budgeted X amount for this line item. But you're either over or under on that line item, so either take money out of it or move money in. The two classic examples are, you you budgeted to have the driveway plowed fifteen times. And there was a, it was a, it was a heavy winter, so you had to plow it thirty times. Um, the most, you know, obvious one and the the most, you know, significant one is generally your special education line item. Um, you got a child that moves in in the middle of the school year, that requires intensive services. And and you didn't have that budgeted, so fortunately, it only snowed three times this winter, so you could pull money out of the. The snowplow line item and 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 move it in there. Um, the other most important aspect, um, given all the things that are going on, do you do an annual audit? And if you, if you, if you. If you don't, just like tap your nose, but don't say anything.
I just have been behind on them, that's why.
That's, that's one thing, just, you know, um, they're not cheap, they're time-consuming, but. Please, please, please do an annual audit moving forward. Um, and the other thing too, just in the interest of transparency, you know, we've been floating around ideas at NHSBA, giving some of the hullabaloo. We know we're gonna get a lot of legislation this year, there's probably fifty bills already filed about trying to deal with this, so. I'm gonna try to mitigate that as much as I can. Um, when the, when the board receives the audit, when it gets back, put it on the agenda and discuss the executive summary of it. You know, if it's clean, fantastic, hey, great, we got a clean audit, kudos to the BA, the business office. You know, if there are, I'm gonna use the word deficiencies, that may sound a little bit strong. Um, you address those, the the note, the auditor noted these two or three things. They said we should have a policy on this, they said that we should, that the, that the administration should tighten up some internal controls. Whatever the case may be, talk about it, put it on the agenda when you receive the audit. So, the good people behind me can know that you're doing your, your due diligence with the, with your fiscal responsibilities. And then, heck, even post it online, you know what I'm saying?
They're all posted.
What's that, they're all posted, yeah, good, fantastic.
Just did that, a thorough review of that for all the findings at our last full board meeting.
Yep.
So, that went, that went out with all the findings and remedies and all of that.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Um, questions on budgeting or policy work before we move on? Okay, I'm on page, slide thirteen, strategic planning?
Actually, sorry, I did have a question about the manifest review.
Yeah.
Um, because this came up at a municipal budget committee meeting recently. So, it is permissible to have only two board members sign the manifest?
Correct, the statute is RSA one ninety-seven, colon, it's either twenty-three or twenty-three A, I forget which one. Um, it says upon authorization of two school board members.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know, there may be boards that do more than that, I don't, I don't know offhand. But the common practice is to.
Okay, I assumed that there was a reason we were doing two, but I didn't know offhand.
Yeah, again, it's one ninety-seven, it's either twenty-three or twenty-three A, I forget what specific one.
And we, so we started last year doing monthly expenditure reports. So, we review those, we publish those, there was a request last night actually about the manifest being public.
Yep.
Um, we have historically not made them public, because we're a small community and so much of it could be identifiable.
Yeah, um, what's that?
There is a lot of person that identifies with them even there.
I'm sure there is, I'm sure there is. Um. So, here's what I can say, the default is that every document in your possession is a public record.
Yeah.
Unless, if it's in one of the exemptions under RSA ninety-one A five. Um. So, you know, if somebody were, if somebody were to say, I wanna see the manifest from, you know, the October school board meeting, you gotta provide it to them.
Yep.
You'd have to, you'd have to go through and redact it, whether or not you trust that to be done internally, or whether or not you send that out to private counsel. To identify, you know what I mean? I just, I, 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 I understand people get, and school board members as well, to get frustrated with. The budgetary line items for for legal, for legal expenses, but, you know, I'm a lawyer by trade. So, I'm like, you know, I would much rather spend the legal fee to have an associate. Go through and make sure you're not releasing anything personally identifiable information versus you releasing something personally identifiable. That, you know, some releases are innocent enough, I will tell you right now, like, I, I know this from experience. Personal experience, which I really try not to get into when I'm in public doing my job. But I forget if it was when my daughter was in sixth or seventh grade, it was, they were still using Smarter Balance. Um, there's the statewide assessment. Something got off in the stuffing of the envelopes with the way the envelopes were addressed. So, I received another kid's assessment scores. Somebody else received my daughter's assessment scores. I mean, this is a good-sized school district for New Hampshire, so it has probably impacted. You know, hundreds and hundreds of kids. Um, and I know that they were, I know they were one-off, because my last name is Christina. I received the one for the person, their last name was like Christie or something like that, so I could tell. It was, it was one-off, so. Um, anyway, my point being is be careful with what you're releasing, and I presume you're talking about special ed kids and special ed costs. And there may be, yeah, you've gotta redact it, you know, anything that could be on there. Whether or not you feel comfortable doing that internally, or you would wanna send that to private counsel.
Is it, are you aware of any boards that proactively publish the manifest or only do it under N one A request?
That's a good question. I wanna say, yes, I know some districts that have posted online, but if you were to ask me who.
Sure.
I don't know offhand, but I think.
On the man. No, I know, I, I, I don't recommend it, because the amount of stuff we have, I like, I don't, I'm not on the manifest committee, but I did. Review it this week, because our member is out of the country. Um, and just looking at it, you know, you can, there might be a transportation company listed, which. People might not think is personally identifiable, but hey, I see that bus company come pick up my neighbor's kid every day.
Yeah.
So, now I know how much that child is costing for transport.
And 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 I know that, just again, hearing, talking to school boards and and central office people, you know, the memo line on a, on a check. You gotta be very mindful with that, you know, and some districts will, we use like initials, which is dangerous, but you've gotta have something.
To be able to.
To 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 trace it back to what what it's for and who it's for, you know? So, yeah, if you're paying a transportation company, a residential facility, you know, uh, medical care. Whatever the, whatever the case may be, you've gotta like, something, and I say check, a lot of these are not, obviously, checks anymore. Um, but there's going to be something on either that invoice or the PO that has, going to identify.
Which student?
Which student.
Yeah, because we have to track per student spending.
For a thousand different reasons, special ed law, Medicaid reimbursement, you know, for a thousand different reasons.
And if we were to get that request for, um, the manifest, it, there would be a cost, we would be charging the person, because we'd have to print every paper to redact. Every document, so you would be charging the person who's requesting it.
Right, yeah, right, and the man-hours, if you're doing that internally, it's a lot of man-hours too.
Correct, oh, yeah, I can't imagine, um, how long that would take. I mean, it would be my position, I think, that we would send them all to legal counsel for redaction, so. If it's a budget line item that people wanna approve for, you know, hire legal counsel. We can do it, but.
Yeah, I've got some.
Could get a cost for the manifest.
Stories about that, but I'll, I'll. I've got some good anecdotal stories about that, but I'll 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 save those for for a different time, so. Any other questions?
That was a very timely conversation.
Yeah. Um so I'm on page slide thirteen, um strategic planning, do you have a strategic plan here, do you have any long range plan? No, consider it?
Yet.
Not yet. Um a a good time to do strategic planning is when you have a new superintendent. Um I'm just saying, um you know, cause a lot of that, so a lot of this stuff flows together.
Right.
Right? So you know, one, there is a, there is a requirement in law that the Department of Education rules three oh three point zero one G. Schools are supposed to develop long range plan and identify measurable and attainable short term objectives. I I call that strategic planning just for the for for simplis- simplicity sake. Um you know, number of reasons why NHSBA advocates for strategic planning. One, it lets you forecast into the future to some degree in terms of capital improvements, in terms of student enrollments and populations, staffing. Um ties into a capital improvement plan if you have one, it ties into buying curriculum, buying computers, buying supplies. Um it's a good, um it's a good tool to use to develop the superintendent's goals. Like so for example, if you had a, if you had a strategic plan, and let's say it was relatively new within the last year or so, and it was a five year plan. And you know, and you bring in a new superintendent, I would say, you got a strategic plan, we're talking about superintendent goal setting. What do you think the superintendent's goal should relate back to? To strategic plan that you just spent time and time and time and effort on. Um strategic planning can be done in a variety of different ways. Uh I've seen some school boards do it over a matter of three months, four months. I've seen some boards do it over the course of a twelve month process. I've seen boards do it where they handle it internally, but then they'll get community feedback via surveys, community forums, meet and greet type of stuff. I've also seen some where um where the board has said, we're inviting the community on and will create some committees, right? So if you wanna be a part of this Deerfield and the Deerfield community, let us know and we'll find a spot for you. Those are often, again, just my anecdotal experience, that model works better in kind of larger districts and larger S A Us. Um but here's a great, here's a great example of 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 why strategic planning is beneficial and why looking at a variety of different sort of aspects of school board or school, I'll call them school district operations is beneficial. This district, this was maybe ten years or so ago. Um wanted to undergo a a larger district, handful of buildings, so on and so forth. So they had different committees. They had a facilities committee and a technology committee and a whatever else committee. And they had an elementary school, maybe it was the, whatever, they had a building that was like ninety years old or a hundred years old, right? So obviously that needed some work. They had a technology committee that was like, we want the latest greatest internet and the latest greatest science labs and the latest greatest technology in our school. This is great, twenty-first century learning, and then the people on the facilities committee were like, we've got like asbestos in here and like I don't even know if we, like, can we even run like wifi in this building that, so in anyway. It 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 brought people together to have that conversation, was like, you know, we've got, we've got, we've got some things to think about and consider here. So it was, um I just, I find that is sort of a, I I've been, I'm entertained by that story, I hope, I hope maybe it was. It, I think it's a good example though of how making sure that the left hand is knowing what the right hand is doing when you're doing goal setting and when you're doing strategic planning, so. Questions on that? All right, am I running too long, am I doing okay on time? All right, uh board goal setting, talked about that a a little bit. Um examples of some board goals, um on page seventeen now. Um another primary role and responsibility for school is communication. Um communicating with your constituents is, I don't know if it's more important now than it ever has been, but there's certainly the expectation that information will be made available and the information will be made available as soon as your constituent wants it. Um you know, obviously that, you know, to some degree dictated by technology and we're used to having information, you know, like that. Um you know, but when I say communication with your with your constituents, um I know we're recording the meeting, it's a live stream, we're just recording, right? So um so that's one way to help, you know, facilitate communication with your constituents by making it easier for them to attend school board meetings. We do the public comment, we got a handful of people in the in the in the audience tonight. Um but you know, so I, but I mean more than just posting notice of your meetings, obviously, and making video recordings and audio recordings available. And and posting your minutes online and whatnot. Um you know, part of this is still somewhat of a of a COVID response. And sometimes I like to joke, it's a COVID trauma response, um where, you know, everything was changing twen- every twenty-four hours, right? And so parents, you know, we needed to, we needed to be able to communicate with parents in a minute's notice. Because today we're doing, you know, hybrid, but lo and behold, you know, twenty kids just got in the first grade class, just got wiped out, wiped out with the Rona, so we're gonna, we're pivoting and switching again, right? And it was also our kids eating in the in the in the, you know, can they take the mask off at lunch? Can they sit next to their buddy at lunch? Can we run outside and take the masks off and let the first graders get some fresh air and run around and see their friends? So it was, there was all that planning and all that communication, right? Um so I think there's still an expectation to for for parents and constituents to have that information. And the technology helps, I presume that, you know, you got like a a text message service for snow days and and I know there was obviously the issue in in Pembroke yesterday, so I imagine you have different tools at your disposal to get the message out as soon as possible. Um do you do any social media here?
Do you have a Facebook?
Do you, yeah, so that helps somewhat. Um so just be mindful, wh- wh- what I've also found too, I've talked to a handful of school boards that are trying to find creative ways to be visible in the community that are not just the the ball game and the concert and the P T A. For example, um uh the Concord School Board. Uh you may know there's the farmer's market in Concord by the State House every, whenever they run from June to probably winding down now, right? Um a number of years ago, the Concord School Board went to the people that organized that that farmer's market and said, can we have a booth? So they set up a booth, I think maybe somebody brings a carafe of coffee, and it's just coffee hour with the Concord School Board. And two members of the Concord School Board, I think they do it on a rotating basis, so it's not the, you know, the same two people that are stuck with it every Saturday or Sunday. But people can walk up and buy their apple pie and, you know, oh hey, you know, Concord's, well, that's why, let's talk about the budget, let's talk about you know, the building project that's going on, let's talk about the issue with school care, you guys have school care or health trust?
Yes.
Do you have school care, what are they hitting you for?
Two sixty.
Yeah.
Two hundred and sixty. Lot of different things going on all at the same time relative to that, so. Anyway, my point being is they found a creative way to to, you know, to, so if there are community events.
Yeah.
You know, just ask, you know, hey, can we just have a booth, can we sit here for an hour and a half at whatever it is, the Deerfield Fair, or if you have farmer's markets or whatever is going on. And have people come up and, you know, just be able to have a conversation with you about what's the budget looking like, what's going on with school care. Simple outreach like that, it's more time out of your day, I get that, but you signed up for this and you make big bucks being school board volunteer. Questions about, yeah, go ahead.
One thing I struggle with for the Facebook page, for instance, is, you know, I tend to not post that much commentary, because I, it's hard to figure out what the message from the board is
Yes.
versus what my message is, which might be different.
Yeah.
Um like, you know, we don't allow comments on our posts and we don't use it to.
So it's the district's Facebook page, you're managing it though?
Yes.
To some degree, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It's a board page.
Right, do you have, that's what I meant, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um I mean, have you adopted a policy?
We have.
Yeah.
That says, you know, it's it's for informational purposes only.
Yeah.
Um occasionally, if people have questions, I will personally
Yeah.
say, I just appear or.
I got a question from a constituent about the this that or the other thing.
Um but yeah, I I struggle a little bit with the Facebook page, because there's not always a clear message from the board
Yeah.
to the community about X, Y, or Z.
Yeah. Um do me a favor, Kendra, shoot me an email tomorrow.
Yeah.
I know that, you know, part of our, we do it under sort of the right to know law angle. Um we have done um some, lots of trainings on digital communication. I don't know, Will does most of the
Okay.
for that. I don't know if we, what we have recommended relative to like board or district operated social medias. You know, we give a lot of advice to the individual school board member who's got their, you know, Kendra for School Board Facebook page, which is not an official page, and you have to have disclaimers and, you know, careful what you post and all that kind of stuff. I don't know, but if you send me a reminder email tomorrow, just feel free to do the same or copy each other and whatnot. I'll talk to Will and I will forward you um the latest, probably from last spring um handout that we've, that we did for the, for that webinar. I'll double check and see what um what the content of that is.
Yeah.
Will, we may even have, that's also the type of thing, I'm sure Will and I have researched over the years, in our Dropbox, we've probably got some articles and things of that nature, so.
Sure. I'm also trying to be very careful about all our, the board's electronic
Yes.
um conversation.
Yeah.
So I will always say like, do not reply all.
Yeah.
Um this is for informational purposes, I'm giving you this for information for the next one.
If you need that, I'll send that along too.
Yeah.
Cause, actually, that may be the same handout, but.
One, one area that we've struggled with is, I have at least found it very helpful to do presentations
Yeah.
to the community.
Yeah.
Doing like a public forum, so we did one on special education.
Yeah.
Explaining sort of how special education funding works, who's paying for it, how, you know, what what the laws are that we're required to do.
Yeah.
But, you know, I will, I will create the presentation because in my view, doing it as an entire board, if everyone has input and we're all working simultaneously, that's creating an electronic need.
Yeah. It is.
So, but then we're presenting something that the whole board hasn't had input into.
Yeah, yeah. The 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 one question that we have in the office, sort of an academic question, cause courts have, New Hampshire courts have not addressed this yet.
Right.
And we've talked to fellow attorneys like at the Municipal Association and some of our other colleagues, is um the simple use of like a shared document
Right.
in a Google Drive, you know, can can three people, five people work on that simultaneously? You know, from home, off s- off school board hours, you know, not at a duly called meeting. You know, you're sitting there making some comments at seven o'clock and then Kendra gets on and reviews and makes a couple tweaks and then you get on and do the same thing. Um you know, the conservative response to that question is, yeah, don't do it.
Right, so we haven't been doing it.
Yeah, but, you know, and I and I got, it's, I mean, the right to know law is historically been very, very slow to catch up to technology.
Right. I mean, even if we all have access to it, then it's a publicly available document, regardless of what form it's in.
Right. Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So with all of our comments, with like, if people are having questions and answers.
Yeah.
Like, to me, it seems like such a big risk
Yeah.
to have this big open document.
Agreed, and and the, you know, the flip side of that is the inefficiency of having to email it out and then go do a board meeting for Congress, or Congress has sent to the superintendent and then it can only be shared at the meeting. You know, that that's the, you know, transparency and efficiency are sort of different sides of the same coin sometimes, so.
I mean, we even try to be careful on Facebook, like on the town paper, if somebody starts talking about educational issues and like a seek Kendra response, I
That that that's the
I don't say anything.
That's the hypothetical that that we give, you know, there's a hot button issue in town and you post at five o'clock. Three hours later, Kendra sees it and she posts, not even knowing, cause there were a hundred posts in between, not even knowing that you posted it. And then an hour later, before you go to bed, a hundred comments later, you have no idea, two of your fellow board members commented and you comment. Is that, again, this is one of those, you know, we we try, we try to advise very cautiously. You know, the courts haven't addressed that, um but, you know.
We don't wanna set the case off.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna, you don't wanna set the case.
We're gonna sit present. But then there's also concern like if
I just don't look at Facebook much anymore.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's a, yeah.
It would also not be permissible, at least by our policy, if Ellen was commenting and Cannon was commenting and I was texting Ellen saying, say this, say this, say this.
Say this, say this, yeah, right.
That would still be
Correct.
three of us commenting.
You can't do, right, the, one of the, the, one of the aspects of the right to know law is you can't do anything to circumvent the spirit or intent
Right.
of the, you know, there was the the, one of the first digital cases um in New Hampshire. Never went to the Supreme Court, cause everybody knew that the Spirit Court was correct. It was out of Worcester River, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Um you know, and this board chair had it out for the superintendent and came in and wanted to make changes and didn't listen to me, didn't listen to his, their kind of their private counsel, who was a school law attorney. Found an attorney, either his neighbor or somebody he went to church with or something that never dealt with right to know law or public municipal law at all. So he was, he'd email you separately, then email you separately, the same email, and email you separately. And then say, never quarrel, there's never quarrel, there's never quarrel. And the judge was like, come on dude, I I know exactly, I know what you're trying to do, right? You know, you know, if it looks like a duck and acts like a duck, you know, it's a duck, so.
And our, we have a policy that says you can't
You know, and
do that.
Yeah, yeah, be mindful to, you know, innocent mistakes are going to happen, you know what I mean? You're gonna forget to to B C C and you're gonna send it out or whatever. You know, i- if it, if it, you know, if a mistake happens, you know, you've 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 addressed it at the next meeting, so it's in the minutes and you do a mea culpa. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And that's the, that's that's the, that's the best, we apologize, this was just a misunderstanding or a lack of knowledge. We called NHSBA, they told us, do this, do that, we're doing the training, we're doing right to know law training with them, we can schedule it, and you do a mea culpa, you know? Questions? Am I okay on time? I know I said I was gonna do the abridged version, I wouldn't be mindful of. Wanna save the rest for the ref for another time, I mean, do we wanna keep going?
There is quite a bit.
There is quite a lot.
Yeah, this, that's about half of the presentation so far.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah. So that's the baseline, um let me just sort of recap real quick. Collective authority versus individual authority, you have to work as a collective group, the five of you, right? Governance, not management, school board governs the school district, how do you govern the district? Policy, budget, strategic planning, evaluation, oversight of the superintendent, communications with your with your constituents. Management, day to day operations, is the boiler working? Are the buses on time, are staff following policies and doing what they're supposed to be doing? Um you know, are uh managing students, managing grants, managing the money, so on and so forth. And in the middle is, you know, your policy work, that gives direction to the superintendent, but shows um but 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 expresses how the board would like to see things done and what you would like to see done, so.
Can I answer a question?
Yeah, no, you can.
Um so there are from time to time issues where it's not clear where the boundary is between setting policies for the school district and sort of what I will call micromanaging
Yeah.
of the school functions.
Yeah.
And I'm not always sure how to deal with those, or like, I'm gonna give an example.
Yeah.
Cause I'm sure he would be fine with it. Um there's a public commenter who comes every year and asks about Halloween costumes in the school. And to, and my response generally is that that's not really a board level decision, that is an administrative decision. And my view is that it's the board's, um we should be supporting whatever the administration decides on that issue. But then they will come continually come back saying, this is, this is actually a board decision, and I I don't know how to sort of navigate those
Right.
discussions.
So here's what I would say, there's nothing law about Halloween costumes.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
In the absence of law, the board is free to, if it so chooses, adopt a policy regulating the use or wearing of Halloween costumes in school, right? If you wanted, as a school board, wanted to prohibit the wearing of Halloween costumes in school, you would have that prerogative to adopt policy. I would think that your absence of a policy or the board's absence to, of choosing to act
Right.
on that request from a constituency means that you're happy with it being an administrative function. There's a, you may have a policy, it's maybe in section B or C. And 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 if you don't have a policy, there's also sort of a And 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 if you don't have a policy, there's also sort of a, a general operational aspect called administration and the absence of policy. If you don't have a policy on a particular topic, the default position is that the superintendent, either him or herself or through delegation, has the authority to make a judgment call on that topic. If the board does not like the the judgment call that the superintendent has made on a particular topic, then I would encourage the board to have that conversation with the superintendent and adopt a policy, give him the superintendent guidance on Halloween costumes. So, you know, that that that's what I would say, if you don't have a policy on it, the superintendent, either him or herself or through delegation to the building level principal or the spec director, whoever the topic falls under, has the has the authority to act. If the board wants action in a certain way or doesn't want action in a certain way, you have the prerogative to adopt policy.
So essentially, if something, if the board wants something to happen, we really need to figure out a way to put it into policy, not just give directives.
Yeah, yes and no, you know, don't put, you can't have a policy on everything.
Okay.
Because you can't regulate everything.
Right.
You know what I mean? There are times when you may want a policy, if it's gonna be a longstanding issue that impacts the district as a whole on an ongoing basis, maybe you want a policy. There may be other times where you simply give the superintendent a directive. You know, superintendent, we want you to report back to us on how many school districts allow their kids to wear Halloween costumes, right? And so then Jess is going to call around to her fellow neighbors and superintendents and call me and say, do you have a policy on this? No, what do you do? We let the, we let the building level principal manage it, right? So, but you don't need a policy on that, you're telling the superintendent, look into something for us.
Got it.
Right, and report back to us about X, Y, and Z or whatever the case may be. You have to be mindful of trying to pigeonhole everything into a policy.
But it wouldn't be appropriate, I think, to say without a policy.
I mean, first I would say, look at your dress code policy, probably have a dress code policy.
Sure, we do, I'm sure.
You know.
But but it would not be appropriate for us to say, principal, we need, we want you to allow Halloween costumes.
I mean, I, you know, my personal opinion is I think that's that's micromanaging, that's.
Right, that's my position.
That's that's that is, that is touching on the supervision of students. Which is an administrative prerogative, not a prerogative, administrative responsibility.
Right.
In the, in one ninety-four, C four, C four two. Which lays out all the, you know, um again, if you pull in a white paper, it's page like thirteen, I'm sure there's something about, you know, oversight of pupil, that kind of stuff, so.
Okay.
But you know, the other thing too, is just to be, you know, respectful of, of, you know, I have that conversation in a lot, you know, we do this training for a lot of school boards. You know, I I I'm I'm cognizant of the fact that, you know, one person's micromanaging is another person's good governance.
Right.
You know what I mean? And and as I said, there were small first, you know, I know some small districts, you know, some K through five school districts where the board is heavily involved in, in things of that nature, you know what I mean? And if, you know, and if it works for their district and that's the way the school board wants, you know, the superintendent has a decision to, is that something that I make a kerfuffle with with my board? Or is that something that I'm not gonna, you know, not gonna, not not gonna push as sort of, uh, you know, impeding on my quote-unquote territory? So, you know, different boards may have, may have, may have different ideas, but. Anything else? I hope you found it helpful, I hope you didn't take up much of your time.
No, I thought it was great.
Yeah, um, you know, uh, follow up with an email on the electronic communication stuff?
Yes.
Um, and if you would wanna schedule a time when we can get the rest of the board here. And typical training is, you know, to have a good conversation is about an hour and a half. I understand it's another night out for you, if you got a meeting tonight, we, I can squeeze it in in about an hour. So much of that depends on sort of the level of engagement with the board and whatnot, but check your dates, check with your fellow board members. Get back to me and as I said, I'm I'm happy to come out again at the board's, at the board's request.
Correct.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to our next agenda, Ada. Which is the budget presentation. Do you need anything shared or anything, Ms. Whitty? Do you need anything shared or like big screen for budget?
No, unless you want me to put it up there on the big screen.
No, I think we're all right. All right, ready?
Yeah.
So just as a primer for for people on the board, this is, this is rough draft, as I understand it. And it's certainly not going to be all the budget lines, so you'll, if looking at the grand total is not, not advisable at this point, because it will, most of the budget line items have not been filled out yet.
So, yeah, cause we break the budget presentation up into two separate sections, so that way the principal can highlight the day-to-day functions of the school that are part of the budget. And then when Amber will join us the next round and um special education as well, so that way we can talk about staff salaries, special education, like those personnel and benefits and those kinds of things in addition to the building budget, which is what, this is what he's gonna talk to tonight. We, Chris and I had a question for the board on how you wanted her to approach tonight's budget. Did you want her to go through every line that she adjusted for this year? Or did you want her to focus on the items that had um a swing up or down? What was the board's preference?
Um, I can't speak for the whole board, cause I've been through the budget creation three years now. So if other people, I would be fine with just sort of big swings, but understand that other people might want other things, so. What say the board?
Um, I mean, so you said adjustments versus swings up or down, yeah, is that different or?
Well, you could go line by line, so like, let's say we go through general supplies, that doesn't have any difference. So we could go through every single thing that makes up general supplies, or we could just go through the ones where there are increases or decreases.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, yeah, okay, but you you said adjusted and then you said more big swing, more swings, so it sounded like the same thing, so.
Oh, sorry, I fell in with you there.
Sorry about that, there's nothing really, it's a big swing, so.
Well, big swing could be fifty dollars to be on the line, like if they had one dollar in it before and now it's up to fifty, like talk about why that's kinda gone up.
Okay, okay.
So the, um, I just have one question, the first one, education technology, it looks like it's basically the same as the default budget.
What 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 page are you on?
Oh, I am on page, nevermind, I was, I already jumped a page.
Yeah, do you wanna?
Listen, I'm sorry, I I didn't look at that.
Do you want her, do you want us, whether you go line by line or?
No, I'm okay with doing ones that are different or ones that we just might have a question of.
Okay, so just to give a quick overview, Cam, I can't remember, were you with us last time?
No.
Okay, so um as you're looking on page one, which is found in lower, the lower left right-hand corner, it says page one. At the very top, it has the account number, so that's the zero zero one eleven hundred one ten. Um, and then there's a description of what that budget line is. And then there's a line number, so this is, can be a little confusing, cause you think, is that part of the budget, not part of the budget? So when I reference a line number, I might say it's line number eight, so you would look under that third column, line number eight is down, okay. Um, it, we have a lot of the actuals from last school year uh as listed, as well as uh what the default budget was this past school year. Um, as opposed to what our proposed budget was last year. This is what the default, where we landed as a default. Then is um our, what we're proposing for this year in the next column. And then there'll be a difference between what the default was and what we're proposing, what we're proposing. And then we haven't gotten to the default budget yet, and then there's a difference at the end. So the default budget, there are some lines that haven't have numbers in it, but it was more a change, not a big change.
Um, the other orientation thing is that um there are lines, like I think the first one is on page four, that say funk, F-U-N-C, and those lines are subtitles for that.
Yeah. That grouping.
For that group, yeah, so that gets very confusing for people, so like, why do we have, why do we have this twice? So like on page four, it'll be like two thirds of the way down the page, it says funk, regular programs. That's a subtotal for a regular program.
For the ones above it, right. So I'm not asking for twenty five, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, that's the total of what those, all those lines together are, yes.
But that, that's a point of confusion, I mean.
Definitely, definitely.
I always highlight all those lines personally, so that I know that it's a subtitle.
And then we don't have, like for some of these things that are zero, like teacher salaries and stuffs and um interns stipends, those are zero because we just don't know yet.
Correct, uh some of the lines I ha- I do have numbers for you, because um they, I I didn't have them available to me in the, we call it IVE. It's Infinite Visions is where we put our numbers in, so I didn't have access to the line and I, and Amber needed the numbers to get the budget into the um drive. So I do have some numbers, next time those numbers will be plugged in though.
Okay.
Then, and you can plug them in as we're going along, if if that helps you. And some of the lines, like the teacher salary one, for example, we have that, but it's not part of the building presentation. Because this is really just Ms. Whitty's chance to focus on curriculum, supplies, like the meat and potatoes of like the actual day-to-day schooling piece, not the personnel piece. Um, and not special education, which will come the next time, which we won't for a while. Um, the other, the last note that I wanna make sure you are aware of is that where you see account note, so like on page one for line nine, the account note follows the line above it. So the account note for music equipment and repairs goes to line nine, which is instruction, equipment, repair. If there's no account note, then that means there's nothing in there of that, of any necessary, nothing had to be clarified, right?
Clarified.
That some lines don't need clarif, like ELL tutor doesn't need clarification.
Right. But if we, like sometimes we'll go through the budget and we'll have questions about something and then we'll add in again.
Yeah. Yes, definitely.
If, if there's confusion.
Uh, so I'll start with line two, which is intern stipends, it does say zero. The, our default, so we've, every year we've tried to lower that number, because we don't have as many in UNH interns and or interns in general. Um, but because we end up in a, so so our fiscal, our actuals for twenty uh four twenty-five was twenty-five hundred dollars, so we had a few music interns. But we had seventy-eight hundred dollars to spend. We, every year we try to get that number reduced, but when you end up in a default budget, it goes back to the number that it was in the default budget, which is seventy hu- is seventy-eight hundred dollars. So it does say zero there, but we are going to again propose two thousand dollars for intern stipends. With the thought that we might get a music intern or an art intern, and we don't always know that until the springish. It's December into the springish, so we budget it just in case. Um, but we would like to reduce that line from seventy-eight hundred to two thousand. And again, because we end up in a default every year, that number goes back to seventy-eight hundred dollars. Uh, the next line is, is, yeah, yeah.
Um, so are these, those are college students?
Correct.
So.
They're coming to do um student teaching, in essence, student teaching.
And I don't know if it's.
Are we required to pay them or?
I was just gonna say.
It is something that we've done for many, many years.
We've done it for a long time, there's a lot of um schools that don't pay. But one of the reasons we did it was because we're so far from UNH.
Well, it's just the travel alone.
So the travel for students that are going to UNH, so, cause it's not a lot, it's a very small amount, but they end up getting it, uh, a week, it's pretty much gas money.
Um, some people make their choice, made their choices over the years to come here because there was a small stipend involved. So, like, like Ellen said, it, UNH is, most of the students now are placed in the Dover, Rochester, in the, in near Durham, in that, in those schools.
The other thing too is that we require, at least we did, we require them to stay the whole semester. Like so to the end of the year, whereas other schools, when UNH ends, they're done. And we expected them to stay, I don't know if that's still the case, but it was. So that was another reason to give a little bit of money, cause it's a longer period of time than other schools.
But they're receiving some kind of credit for this, right?
Correct, sure, yeah.
Yeah, well, they get their degree at the end, that's the, that's the last stop in the, in the.
Right. Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, hopefully, they do, okay.
One, two, three, process, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, substitute salaries um is at forty-two thousand, that's sort of in line with um what our actuals were in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, again, because we end up in a default, we, even though we've tried to maybe lower that number or even out that number. Uh, so that line is is three. Um, I do go down to line nine for instructional equipment repair, that is an example of where there's an account note. Uh, we have held at fifteen hundred dollars for years now. Um, because we end up in a default, every year we try to ask for a little bit more money, because there are music equipment repair costs. Chemical cleaning of the trumpets, clarinets and flutes, all of that costs money, we send it up to our, Incubarx is the company we use to do all of our equipment repairs and cleanings. Uh, because we can't get that number up, every year we have, we have less and less music instruments that can get repaired or cleaned. Um, line ten is technology equipment repair. We have, and the default budget was a thousand dollars, we've been trying to get that line down to a dollar. Um, and move that line into the techno- technology supply line. Right now, technology supplies include things like, um, you know, mice, headphones, that type of thing. It does come out of our general supply line, because we cannot get that, uh, that, that um amount up to, up to a thousand dollars. We're trying to get the supply line into a thousand dollars, so we figured we would take the technology equipment repair line and move that money to the technology supply line.
Do we not have any technology equipment repair that happens?
Um, it's, we have not used that line in years, it is, that, it's been years that the actuals have been zero, because we have another, we have other areas that we
Gotcha.
have computer technology equipment repair. It just keeps defaulting back to a thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I assume that we do need technology repaired previously.
Right, right. Um, then the other piece too, um, Cam, since you're so new to this, is that um if we end up in a default, that will go back to a thousand dollars and we still don't have money in our technology supply line, because we can't, that the lines just revert back to on the, the dollar or the amount that was previously.
But so, the only thing that, um, this doesn't show is like what we actually used that if.
The actuals does show.
Yeah, so it's column number four, tw- twenty-four, twenty-five budget actuals. So if you go down that line, you can see, yeah, that's the actual amount we used last year.
Column that's where.
And it's been zero, that's why they're trying to give her the block. Yeah, we just spent now, and and.
So that other line is somewhere else and just, this adds it up?
Uh, I don't know if it says zero, we'll get to that line, I think I was concerned on.
Probably, I'm not sure.
I do. Um, but it's lower than where we would like to be able to utilize that thousand dollars for the supplies that we actually need for technology, not necessarily equipment repairs. And equipment repairs does fall in a couple of other lines that I'll get to.
It's almost like it's a dumb end line.
Um, on page two, line eleven. Um, I apologize, the, the number there is a little lower than what I had, I have in my um technology appendix. So it's listed at twenty-four one, but we were, we're going to request twenty-five thousand two hundred, which is not much more, but we have a, some educational software that's about two thousand dollars that we added on at, towards the very end. What was that number again, Chris? Twenty-five thousand two hundred.
So that's the proposed budget?
That's gonna be, that's, yeah, right now it's in there, it was twenty-four thousand one fifty. I didn't catch it when I was um trying to update everything. Uh, that does have a, a note, so where, if you see right below Cannon, it says account note, see appendix C. And so in the budget packet are um appendixes for technology, as well as maintenance and facilities and um our. So the three, you have three appendices, appendices, appendices. So our technology appendix is appendix B, it does say C, but.
Yeah, those, that says C.
It is a tech, appendix B.
Oh, should be.
Have, have we done um surveys of how many people use these ones, like, I'm like, I excel, not just, I know. Have have we done um surveys of how many people use these ones like I'm like I X L not just I know they use a lot for math, but how much they use it for social studies, science.
Yep, they use a lot, we uh.
Seesaw.
Yep, every year um our technology person puts a survey out and we get we get usage um reports as well.
Okay, so is that something we're gonna get pretty soon so we can see with the budget, the usage rate?
Oh, we don't usually write that to the board, like that would be Kristen gets those reports and she'll make the recommendation to adjust the budget from that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Okay.
Um but everything that you is that we put in there does have high usage. Uh and these are just a s- a sampling of of things that we have purchased either towards the end of last year or this year. So they might go up a little bit for the next school year, which is why that number might fluctuate a little bit. Um but this is I X L, this is our educational technology line is where we have. Um things that the whole school is using, this is also the line that we tried to move our library tech line into. A little floating down, I'll go over the library tech line, but that I've tried to make sure that everybody knows what library um software we need. So we've been listing those things out.
And these are just your school based software programs, not like our bigger system wide software like Google, Microsoft, like those.
Correct. Right.
Right.
That comes under the umbrella of.
Right, so like curriculum stuff.
Correct.
Yes.
Um this might be a uh question for a later meeting, but um when we put these numbers in, does it automatically populate in the proposed default? Or does Amber go through all of those and figure out which actually would carry over into the default?
She a little bit of both, so there will be some that automatically carry over or don't carry over, but then she will go through and go line by line.
Okay. Right.
To determine um what qualifies and what doesn't qualify, and we have um legal guidance that's been provided to us from our attorneys that state what qualifies and what doesn't qualify.
Right, so but for the purposes for tonight, we really shouldn't look at the proposed default numbers.
Oh, right, that'll be that'll be more important when Amber comes the next time, yeah.
That comes in. Okay.
I believe she went and updated most of these, but it'll be it'll make more sense when we have the whole picture.
Yeah.
I jump down to lines thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Um thirteen is we're holding at the at the amount that we um budgeted for this past school year. World Cultures is held the same, Health I increased a small amount because if when we get a new health teacher for the fall. When we do, uh they might need a little bit more money to buy some the outside of this supply, some materials. Um at the end of last school year, if you remember correctly, um we used surplus to purchase the uh journals.
Mm-hmm.
And we still have those tucked away in in the closet, the closet closet office.
So uh. Chris, I know I'm seeing an increase on that on health, it it went down to five hundred, is it?
There's five. No, went up.
Payable.
So I'm looking at column one, two, three, four, five, six, column six is where the uh proposed budget is.
Yeah, the twenty six, twenty seven.
Yep, and so Health was at two hundred.
And the like sense. Okay, well mine that does that is not what mine says at all.
The the voted default twenty five, twenty six is two hundred, is two hundred.
The next line over says five hundred.
Yeah, and then the next one says five hundred, and that's the proposed budget, isn't it five hundred?
Yeah, it's like one of three hundred dollars from default, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, from the default, I was looking at the budget actuals, so the budget actuals were because we bought all those notebooks.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, no.
The ripple journals, yes, and we use surplus for that, I'm just reminding you of that.
Okay, and we don't need those. Okay, thank you, I just, you said that it was more and I was looking at the at the actuals, okay.
Uh but that brings up a good point though, when you when you approve surplus to be used, it gets applied to the line that it's going to.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's gonna look, even though it may have only been two hundred dollars in default. We apply the amount to the exact line so you can see where those approved amounts went to.
Mm-hmm.
Um and the same thing goes for like any pooled salary pieces, like we talk about with the full S A U board. There's pooled increases and then when those get applied, they go directly to that line a year after. Cause you wanna allocate and make sure that you're attaching money to lines because you can't just have money sitting there that's not attached to a line, so.
Next line down is art, uh they're asking for a small increase based off of rising cost of art supplies. Uh so they are they they buy um individualized sketchbooks every single year. And that is a probably seven thousand dollars of their budget, would you say Trish?
Mm-hmm.
Seven thousand of their dollar of their budget goes directly to those sketchbooks that are basically locally and individually handmade, yes, exactly.
Locally handmade. Yeah.
Every kid designs their own cover, um it becomes a treasure for them for many years, but that is half of their budget goes towards paying for that. And yes, it is made by a local um artist in in the area, I think she lives in Durham, but she's close.
No, she lives in Deerfield.
Oh, she lives in Deerfield.
She lives in Deerfield.
Oh, okay, yeah, I take that back.
She makes a big sum. Yeah.
Um Guidance has asked for a small increase. And um I I. Math is our are always our our biggest increase. Because of the math programs that we use with Eureka Square and Big Ideas. Every single year when we fall back to a default, we cannot purchase the supply, the materials that we need to fully fund this program. So that is at the end of every year, we have had to either utilize grant money, which is how we originally got Eureka Square, the next iteration of Eureka. Um and we used surplus money to purchase Big Ideas a couple of years ago. And so at the at the end of last year, surplus money was used to op- because we're gonna be in a default budget, we would not be able to afford what we needed. Um the budget, the school board approved us to use, I think it was five thousand or six thousand dollars in um surplus to purchase. And we uh we were able to purchase, I think, fourth and fifth grades materials for. Um Eureka Square and then we used the Fund One budget on July first to purchase the rest of our materials for math for kindergarten, first and second grade. And third grade and the Big Ideas for middle school, um I will I will put this in the note, um so Eureka Math Squared. Um Learn and Digital Bundle Budget, I'm sorry, Digital Bundle is about thirty five dollars per student. K through five. Our Big Ideas purchases materials for grades six, seven and eight, they it we are able to purchase digital licenses for six, seven and eight. We also purchase accelerated digital licenses for seventh grade and our algebra digital license for eighth grade. That costs about twenty three dollars per student. Shipping and handling for both of those is about fifteen hundred dollars, I think one is a thousand and the other one is five hundred, something like that. A total is about fifteen hundred dollars. And then the math department is, they they have in the past asked for about two thousand additional dollars to buy materials and supplies just for the math. Department, which would include things that teachers would need, like manipulatives and um.
Graph paper.
What's that?
Graph paper.
Graph paper and all the things, whiteboard markers that above and beyond what their whiteboard marker supply is and. You know, things to write on and um you know, vertical boards to.
All the visual aids.
Visual aids, yeah, yeah, it also funds um Family Math Night. Um we we take some money out of that to pay for the supplies for Family Math Night.
So what what is the um the fifteen hundred dollars in shipping, is that that's on the digital license?
Yeah, because it's also books, we get hard.
But they're workbooks.
Yeah, for K to five and um we have books that come for Big Ideas. Um and that in addition, I I believe it's Eureka Square, we get we do get a ten percent discount. So that sixteen thousand dollars does inclu- or sorry, eighteen thousand dollars does include a ten percent discount on our Eureka Square.
Curriculum material is expensive.
They are expensive. And they mean that. Um and our math specialists go through each year and figure out how many how many supplies do the teachers already have? How many students are rising to the next level, uh kindergarten's always the tricky one to purchase for, but we know about how many kindergarteners will be going into third grade. So you know, we know about how many second graders are going into third grade, so we know that we only need about forty-ish or so. And if people if teachers have supplies already that uh from from last year or um they might they'll they'll they could even reduce it if they if they know that they would need a lot of that many books for that many kids. Um.
I'm curious what the cost of just textbooks that it gives is is really dangerous.
This is books, right?
The tech, we do have textbooks, yeah.
This is digital and.
This is.
Books to textbooks.
So we had.
Is it, okay, but textbooks you don't have to buy every year, right?
Text. Correct, so the textbooks are have been purchased for sixth, seventh and eighth grade, that's the middle school, um the.
But these are workbooks, which is different, so the some of the books that are getting ordered are workbooks, they're not the textbooks, so like the workbooks are like. Um the kids materials that the kids would actually write in, and so you have to continue to buy those every year because once they're in them, they're.
Yeah, yeah, well, so I I was thinking like a combination of the textbook and workbooks. Right, because the workbooks, cause once you have the textbooks, you have the textbooks.
Correct, yeah, we don't replace.
And you just replace the workbooks, it's like you're not paying every year for the.
Yeah, right.
Textbook.
Digital license and subscription stuff.
Yes, you are, every year you have to pay for the digital license, yeah.
Yeah.
So the workbooks.
So buy the workbooks.
No, no, well, every year you buy the workbooks and every year you have to pay a digital license, like for example. Um for example, like we buy mystery science, we we purchase mystery science every year, which is a traditional box, we have to we renew that every single year, so you have to renew our digital license every single year.
Right, that's why I'm saying.
So sometimes the the materials, like the content they would get from the online program is gonna be different than what they get in the workbooks, it's supplementary, it's it's an addition to. And so some of the practicing that they might be doing on in the workbooks may not work for all kids. And the program that's online might include different scenarios or different program or problem solving. Uh that would be in the workbooks, like it's a different, it's not the same material that the workbooks are, it would be different. Um is there, are there special things that um are there any highlights, can I explain what the digital programs include for like the math?
Uh you have the digital um, the digital license comes with the basically is slide decks with the lessons in it, the teachers use, they project it on their whiteboard. Um copies of things they they might need for the lesson outside of what is available in the workbook. Um can you think of any other materials that the um supplemental materials for the teachers to use, uh family letters that might go home to families?
I was gonna say, we have, we get like family math.
Yeah.
And on in our Friday folders, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um and I there's access to them, I think on the math website, so like if I, my child is struggling with multiplication, there are resources we can use on the website.
Mm-hmm.
That I think directly linked to.
How is that multiplication already?
No, she is struggling with multiplication, but she's only six, so.
I I understand all of that, I that's not what I'm saying is that is like we used to have like te- textbook and then a workbook that is the same in conjunction with the textbook.
Mm-hmm.
Um and none of it was on the computer. Um so my point is that if we had textbooks and workbooks that we have to purchase every year and the textbooks that we used. Then we don't need a subscription for that, right?
But that's how the program comes, that's how that's how it comes.
Not necessarily.
Right. Right, that's how this program comes, right.
Right, and it's been adopted by curriculum, the board, like it's been a it's been a process to get here. Uh we don't adopt a scripted curriculum without board approval because of this reason, because there are costs associated with that. And so uh I think last year, who presented last year, library?
Oh, for curriculum?
Curriculum.
Yeah, math, they were supposed to be in the special this year, yeah.
Math, okay, uh I thought there was another one last year too, but they anytime the um curriculum needs to be reapproved.
Oh, you're talking about the update of the updated curriculum?
Yep, I think they come before the board and they do a presentation, um and if there's changes that need to be made or adopted, the board will do that at that point.
Yeah, math specifically came to the board.
That was a couple of years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago.
Proposing a change of curriculum and a change of program, that was a perfect method.
Asking for new programs. How how is how does I X L math fit in with all of these, you know, the um the big ideas in Eureka Math Square, like why do they need I X L?
Uh it's supplemental to what they're teaching, so um they might use it for they might assign something for homework with I X L, they might um.
It's used during the WIM.
Yeah, it could be used during our intervention block, um it, I mean, every te- teachers use it in different ways.
Too.
They might have a center where some students are working on I X L, another group is working with the teacher, another group is working in the workbook, so they might rotate it, uh so.
Just wondering, cause it's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
And I know like Epsom uses just, I think, just I X L, maybe they've changed, but when I used to stop there, that's what they used.
For curriculum?
No.
Yeah.
No, they should, yeah, they don't use that in word for curriculum, they use it like this, it's supplemental.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really for homework, for independent homework, it's for intervention during like WIM block or independent during a rotation time. Because you can give a kid a level skill out of that I X L that they can do independently while there's other focused groups going on. And when they rotate, then they'll get their one-on-one time or small group time, um so it's used in that kind of rotation.
Mm-hmm, that aligns too, especially at the middle school, it aligns with Big Ideas, so a lot of times it'll be extra practice for kids, so they will. The teacher might teach the lesson, maybe it's a kid who needs extension, or maybe it's a kid who needs a little more support, uh so.
I'm pretty sure at this point, all of our schools are using Eureka, it's pretty universal. Okay.
It it's it is, it's expensive, it's it's probably our biggest item and and again, if we fall in a default, it will fall back to that eleven thousand five hundred fifty two. Last year they needed, we needed sixteen thousand seven thirty one, that was the actual for last year. Again, five five or six thousand of it came from the surplus that we purchased.
Workbooks.
We needed, yeah. Any more questions about that? Um I'd be happy to bring materials next time, you you wanna see what it looks like, if you wanna see what the textbooks look like, if you wanna see the workbooks look like.
No, I just, you know, there's no like, when I brought this stuff up, you know, when it wasn't budget season. That was stuff to talk about during budget season about the monies, the cost differences to have budget season. And we really like we can't change that because that's curriculum, so.
Well, we can't change it, we'd have to go through a curriculum review cycle to do it. So and I don't I don't know that that would be best practice to change a curriculum mid-cycle just because of cost, not what's in the best interest of students. I mean, this is a research-based program that's got scientific backing and supports students and meets our N three oh six requirements.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um it'd be hard pressed to find curriculums. That meet all those requirements and don't have an exceptional cost to them, they're all and quite frankly, it's a racket. It with the publishing companies, I'm convinced of it, but um that's. Any program that you get and you approve that meets our state ed requirements and is research-based, because we are required to do research-based programming. Is going to be expensive and because they are delivered by certain publishing companies, there's only a couple of choose from, they're all linked to the same publishing companies.
And I'll add to that, that a lot of the curriculums that are brought into the into the school are are grassroots curricu- like the teachers are the ones that maybe find it or interested in it. To a top-down approach of saying you will need to now do this curriculum, it doesn't always go over so well. So our simplified writing was something that we had in here that teachers were using, a couple of different teachers were using it and it sort of caught on like that. We've um when we adopted Eureka many years ago, it was piloted, there were two different programs that were piloted, maybe even three. Um I wasn't here for that, but the uh out of the pilot came, that's how we got uh uh Eureka. Was from the pilot, I think the other one was in Visions at the time, so.
And I believe that was all of the schools were doing that at a similar time, piloting that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think Deerfield is the only one who has moved on to the next iteration of Eureka, I think everybody else is still doing Eureka, we're the only ones who moved on to Eureka Square, I'm pretty sure, in the district. And I think our middle school is the only one that's using Big Ideas. Middle schools are either using parts of great of Eureka or bits and pieces and supplementing and. Big Ideas um was had was the full package and it was brought about from our middle school teachers, they're the ones who. Uh found the program, did all the research on the program, along with the math specialist, so it was not a top-down approach, it was definitely a teacher-driven decision. To go with the program.
And just to be clear about the budget, um so this is right, so this is what we feel we need for our current curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
A board member could at any time, we're reviewing this, make a motion to reduce the budget line. If they if they so choose, I mean. Could be based on data or not, um but. We need, we still will need to provide the curriculum that is approved, so you can make a motion at any point if you like. So, you can make a motion at any point, if you'd like.
Um, line nineteen for music. It's a small increase there. Our actuals, oh, so the teachers try to work within the budget that they have, but they, if they have more, they would be able to purchase more. So, our music department has done a nice job of staying within that thirty-two hundred dollars, which is what the default is. Um, and, but they are, they would like, there has been an increase in, um, cost of sheet music, consumable supplies. And replenishment of unpitched hand percussion, that was the note that was given to them, so, um.
Do you know what that means?
With drums?
Unpitched hand percussion.
Yeah.
Where did our music teacher go?
Drums.
Drums.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Not xylophones.
Oh.
Those are pitched, I would assume.
It's true.
There we go. Look at you.
I was in band, thank you, just in case I didn't have that question.
All right, we're on to page three. Uh, small increase for our PE, so, so again, our, our, our PE depart- our library, our music, everybody tries to work within what they're given as a default. And every year we try to get them a little bit more money in the actual, if they had, as you can see, they came very close to fifteen hundred dollars. Penny's on the dime, how do you say that, penny's on the dollar?
Yes.
Uh, they, but if they had a little bit more money, they're, they're always looking at a replacement rotation of all of their, uh, PE materials and supplies. So, um, they're asking for a little bit more money there, our, uh.
The climbing equipment.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, that's a non-negotiable.
Mm-hmm.
Because those have to, those have to be inspected, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah, our climbing walls inspected every year, regardless of whether it's used, I'm not sure if this is a climbing, it just got done, I think it's.
Yeah. Just done?
I think it's a little over a thousand dollars, we've budgeted that in Chris's contracted line, contracted services line is where that's budgeted.
Okay. Sorry.
And it's in, it's on the appendix as well.
But is, so the the climbing equipment is out of date, will the five hundred pay for that? Or are we going to buy less supplies in order to pay for the climbing equipment?
Um, that's a weird question, I can't put it there. So they have, um. They have included it in what they are looking for, so some of the things are, um, head wall harness. It's about a hundred, they want three of them to have a hundred and thirty-two dollars, two hundred and thirty dollars, so they're not huge, big-ticket items.
Okay.
Also, they might go without something to be able to incorporate or include that. Um, but it doesn't look like it's a hu- overwhelming expense.
Got it.
Our language arts budget line, again, um, our actuals for twenty-four, twenty-five are about twelve, almost thirteen thousand. We end up in our, with our default number, every, which is fourteen-three forty. Uh, this is used to purchase all things literacy and language arts-related. Our science line, as you know. Is a dollar, we lost our science line a couple of years ago. And have been fighting to get it back, but because we end up in a default every year, that money that we request always goes back to a dollar.
But did we not spend any money for science?
Any supplies, any supplies for science came out of our supply line.
Got it. It would be helpful to know what we have spent for sciences, I mean.
Mm-hmm. And by that, it was, came out of our supplies, it was only the bare minimum of what people needed.
Right.
And so, you know, maybe, um, a lot of our teachers do a lot of STEM experiments, so they'll buy it out, I I, we give teachers five hundred dollars every year to spend on general supplies. Um, and so, they they might purchase what they need for their science lessons, marbles and straws and cups and tape and all the things out of their actual general supply line.
Yeah.
So, it'd be really hard to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but, but we do have some science things, like, we did get deluxe frogs last year, right?
We did get those frogs.
We did get deluxe frogs, um.
From the farm?
No, we, we ordered them, sometimes we get worms from, who was the guy, what's the worm guy's name?
Uncle Jim's Worm Farm.
Uncle Jim's Worm Farm, so we, that's, that, and it could come out of the science line, but it comes out of our general supply. So there were some big things like that that we could definitely, it's a, it's a great question, or a, a great thought. Um, but again, I put the note in there, um, every single year I've, I've, I'm trying to, uh, the thirty-five hundred will go towards materials and supplies for our three middle school classrooms. Um, and like, five hundred dollars for the three middle school classrooms, and then I would like, about a hundred doll- I would like a hundred dollars for our preschool through, in fifth grade. To be able to purchase what they need for science, which, um. Uh, and then an additional amount for other things that, you know, we're not prepared, we didn't, we might need. Same with our social studies line, our social studies line covers things for the whole school, like scholastic news or time for kids. Um, I would like, I I am asking for forty-eight hundred dollars to purchase the things that we need for our middle school classrooms. I'm asking for a hundred dollars for our middle school classrooms, um, as you know, our middle school teachers teach a unit in social studies or teach social studies. Uh, and then our preschool through fifth grade, a hundred dollars for them to get what they need for social studies.
Um, can I just make a comment about the general supplies?
Mm-hmm.
So if we're putting things that we have been paying for, um, out of general supplies.
Mm-hmm.
Into the budget lines.
Mm-hmm.
Will there be a reduction in the general supply line?
There very well may be.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Where is that upcoming?
The general supplies was line thirteen. So I would just propose taking a look at that, because if we're, if we've paid for school science out of general supplies. And now we're requesting thirty-five hundred for the proposed, I mean, I know it's not one for one, but would there then be a reduction in general supplies?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
It'd be worth, um, maybe doing a, a, a poll of the purchase orders, that, we could do that. Or order history.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, next line down, I'm on line twenty-four, this is where the technology supply line is, this is the high line that, um, we, every year, try to get a thousand dollars in there. This is, would be moving our technology equipment repair line, which is eleven hundred four thirty, to the tech supply line, which is about a hundred and sixty-seven.
That was the line we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, so this is where that thousand dollars, um, if we move it out of that line.
So that one was that zero?
That was it zero, yeah, oh, no, the, because that's the actual, so it's a dollar.
Or one. Right, right.
We, every year goes back to a dollar as the default, but we did not send any money for that one because of the dollar.
But we just felt like it better represented what was being spent if it was in tech supplies versus repairs and equipment, and that was a redundant line from another tech line.
Mm-hmm.
Because we've been in default so long that it's.
But those technology supplies also adaptable out of general supplies?
Trying to clean out. Right, yeah. So it'd be worth definitely doing a deeper dive into that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
All right.
No, that's.
I'm sure it's a lot of work, but.
No, but this is why we do multiple iterations of the budget, because.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I.
Other eyes see different things.
Obviously, you know, we might not be able to know the actual spent, but I think it would be an easier justification if we can show how much we have spent on technology supplies or on science.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And social studies.
And social studies.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, social studies has been, I mean, we've had, our default is twenty-three hundred.
Yeah.
Um, but most of that money goes towards our time for kids or our scholastic news. Um, I'm on line twenty-five, which is computer repair parts, uh, we have traditionally, the actuals for this line, um, have been affected by grant money. We've, we've, I've, for years had, um, computer repair parts at, in the ESAR grants. Uh, in this past school year, what is probably our most, um, based on our most, uh, closest thing to actuals. And, and that was thirty-three hundred, we did not have any grant money, uh, to offset the costs of that. Uh, and, and we happen to have a technology, um, guy in the building who uses a lot of old Chromebooks. So he might pull off keyboards off of an old Chromebook and put it on the new Chromebook if the keyboard needs to be replaced or, um, screens. The, the biggest, um, expense in that line is the motherboard, and that's not something that you can pull out an old computer or put out something, or an old Chromebook. So I am looking to reduce that line to five thousand, um, again, we've tried to reduce that line, um, but we end up in a default. We won't use that, we won't use that, we will not use eight thousand dollars.
And we also don't anticipate that there will be more grant funding.
Right, yeah, no.
Coming out of the culture.
Mm-hmm. Nope. I'm on page four, this is our, um, school-wide subscription, so this, this line, so our, we've tried to, um, streamline our technology lines to just these two lines. Educational, uh, technology and school-wide subscription, so this, um, in the past has had sound dismissal. Or, um, Eureka Navigator accounts, which is the, kind of the overall account that you need to be able to run some of the Eureka, to, uh, to run the Eureka program. Um, music play, which is used for all kids in the building, um, with our music department, those are just a few of the examples of software that we purchase out of the school-wide subscriptions. Um, we are looking to reduce that based on our actuals. Um, on line thirty-one now, thirty-one is our instructional equipment replacement, so this is a line that also belongs to our technology folks. Um, and in looking, in the past, we, we've tried to purchase, when we had smart boards, this is, Ellen would remember a smart board. Now, every single classroom in the building has a touchscreen television, including our new one that's in the back there by the middle of the lightroom. That was purchased with, um, Leek grant money, um, so, uh, we, o- over the years, that, this is the line that we have used to replace things like that. Big-ticket items that, um, are hard, are, wouldn't be able to come out of another area, another area, so we might replace speakers or document cameras. Um, this might be a line that we replace, um, if we needed a new TV, we would take it out of here for classroom, if something happened to a TV in the classroom. But I did put in there to start the replacement, um, cycle of our ThinkPads, which are the, um, are the laptops that teachers received. Uh, that was, that was five years ago with, um, ESAR money. And, um, that was, right now, we're in the, we're in the cycle of trying to replace those. Um, because as you know, techno- the computers, they slow down.
Is there a replacement cycle planned for the next several years to re- recycle all those?
The ThinkPads, yes, um, in another line, we have our Chromebook recycle, uh, cycle plan, so that's a little further down. Uh, this is, the next line down, line thirty-two is our furniture fixture replacement, this is the, our furniture line that Mr. Greve uses. Um, he, as you can see, with the actuals, he, the actual is ten thousand two sixty-eight. He tries to work within that ten thousand dollar mark at the end of every school year, he tells teachers and staff, if, if you need something for your classroom, a new chair, or a new, some new desks, a new. Uh, that's, that all comes out of this, out of this line, and every year we try to get a little bit more money and we end up in a default, so he ends up back at ten thousand dollars. He does a pretty good job with that. This next line, thirty-three, did not move, this is our computer network replacement, so this is the line that, as you can see underneath, there's an account note. So we retire every single eighth-grade Chromebook at the end of, of, uh, that, they're at their end of life because it's happened since fifth grade. So we retire eighth-grade Chromebooks, we purchase new Chromebooks for our fifth graders, um, and we update any aging Chromebooks for K to four. As you know, the Chromebook has a shelf life of about two or three years, and then the, the, um, there's updates that can't be up to, for example, um, we, and there was an entire fleet of Chromebooks we were unable to use this year.
Yeah.
Because iReady testing, that could not be run on, on the aged system, so all of those have to be, they can be used for general classroom things, um, but they can't.
Even that, even that has a shelf life, because it gets to a point where they can't even be updated.
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm.
Going through that.
Yeah.
The eighth-grade retiring Chromebooks.
Yeah.
What, what do you do with them?
So John, you, it's the ones that are in good condition, we keep, um, he uses them for parts.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, we also go through the recycling process, we have a company come in, just recently, we had a company come. And, um, take all of our old technology away, but he does keep a lot of it, so that we can, we have a, that office or a back closet, then he keeps a lot of it.
Yeah, it's a closet.
What's that?
It's a closet.
Uh-huh. All right, I'm going on to page five. I'm on line forty-three. Uh, that line will be about a thousand dollars, this is a special education line. Um, I did not get that number in time to Amber, and did not have the line to use in IVE, which I usually do, so. Uh, but that line is, I'll also put an account note, that is a line that we would use for special ed training. Um, if, if, if a staff member needed or wanted to be trained in something like CPI, which is a de-escalation, um. Training, uh, Wilson reading, things like that, this is a specialized line specifically for specialized training. Uh, as we go down, um, on line forty-five, and I just wanna make a note that this spent equipment repair agreement was for our copier that is in the office. The copier in the office for many years was considered special education copier, so there was a line to pay for the maintenance of that copier. Um, a couple of years ago, we went to, um, all copiers were put into one, uh, umbrella line, which is a little further down that I'll point out to you. So we're, we're trying to get that line to zero because we don't need that line anymore, but when, when you end up in a default, it just keeps going back to one, so we will never get rid of that line.
On, it takes two years to get rid of the.
It's gonna take three years of a budget, of a past budget to actually get rid of that line. We keep trying, but, um, the next line that I'm gonna refer you to is line forty-six, and this is electronic software licensing, again, this is for special education. And I, uh, it says zero, but I will be putting in fifteen hundred, one thousand five hundred, and that covers some specific software for special education. Uh, like Q Global or Everyday Speech, which is, or Edmark, which is, um, specifically for our special education, uh, teachers to use with our students receiving special education services. Uh, go down to, um, line, oof, I think I'm at line. Um. Fifty, that's at zero, but I believe that line might end up being about fifteen thousand dollars, this is for special education supplies. We have held at our, uh, the six, the seven thousand dollar mark, six thousand, seven thousand dollar mark, um, but we have, um. A touch math curriculum that we have some special education, special education case managers are trying to get into, into school and cost about forty-five hundred dollars for that. So, that would come out of this line, uh, we'll have a more solid number, but that's the lot, that we're looking to be about fifteen thousand dollars. As well as some foundation intervention materials that our special education, our case managers need to work with their students receiving special education services. Uh, the next line, line fifty-one, is a line that we no longer need, computer software is not aligned, that's, so we're trying to get that down to zero. The next line down is line fifty-two, just looking for a small increase in that, adaptive furniture, this is a line for special education, purchase adaptive furniture for students who might need it. An example might be a rift-in-chair, if you've ever heard of that, or wooden chairs that, um, hold a student specifically, a student specific might need something like that to sit in the cafeteria. So that they can be part of, um, of the class.
What does, um, inflation mean, just that it's costing?
Just things are costing more, yeah.
I know if you were, you know, inflate, inflate.
Inflation device.
Right.
You never know here in Deerfield, right?
Yeah.
Um. The computer ne- on new computer network, um. The computer, uh, new computer network, we dropped down to a dollar. He doesn't see any expense that is, so we try to predict, right? We're, we're in a, we're in, we're in October and this is from next July one. So it's hard to, hard to say, but it's, so that line will stay a dollar because if we do need something, we need to have somebody to be able to draw on, so.
Do we know what the one thousand forty actuals was? We don't anticipate getting that again?
Um, probably, I believe we purchased some new iPads last year. So that would be, and they were student specific.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. As you know, the special, special education lines are all stu, very, very student specific based on student needs, so.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that we do have money in the places where we might need it.
Sure, sure. The next couple of lines, and our, again, special education, they are at a dollar. Our next, our next line down is fifty six and that is our co-curricular salaries. Again, we have a co-curricular appendix. I think it was last year, the, the board asked Mr. Green to go through and highlight what, what sports were, did we not use coaches for? Can we, we also bumped up our assistant coaches to be the same amount as our regular coaches. For example, our girls, our soccer coaches, both the boys soccer and, a coach and assistant coach pretty much do the same amount of work. So we don't have, we haven't had a B team in many years. So we use that line to, to pay our assistant coaches a little bit more money. So our co-curricular line is our salaries. That's for our coaches, our officials, which is for our hires and referees. And then supply line is, that's our replacement for equipment that's worn out or we need new uniforms. Again, increased due to inflation, not inflation devices, but.
Inflation of the basketball.
Yeah.
That does, it is appropriate.
That's pretty expensive.
The, the co-curricular officials.
Yeah.
That. So the actuals like almost ninety five hundred dollars less than, than the default budget. So I see the proposed budget is still almost double the actual. Do we still need to account for double the amount of what was used this year and last year?
Is that because you didn't have like a team run or something last year that you anticipate having?
Yeah, we, well, we, we budget for what we think is, is going to be, but then maybe we did.
Girls softball, cheerleading.
Yes, right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, so we budget for softball, thinking we're gonna have a softball team. And if we don't have a team, then that money is, you have to budget, we have to budget for it because.
If you got the kids, they're gonna be good at like.
Right. If we have, exactly. For example, we budget for a cheerleading coach because we might have a cheerleading. We haven't had a cheerleading team in a couple of years, but if we take it out, we'll be able to get that.
Are you, do you anticipate having cheerleading?
Every year, there is some interest, but not enough to get a coach. I always tell them, find yourself a coach and you got a team.
Yeah, and I, I think a question came up last year and will, I'm sure will come up again, about the drama coach and the musical.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And I know, I, there has been interest in the musical, but I don't know if that's gonna be pursued or not.
Right. Another example would be a B, the B's, the B team for our soccer coach. Some years we have a B team, some years we don't. So we budget for it because if we don't budget for it, then we don't.
Can't run it.
Right.
I just wonder if there's a way to gauge. When do they start, fifth grade for most of these?
No, six, our sports team are mostly six three except for cross country.
Mm-hmm.
And track and field is fifth grade.
I thought it was, I thought it was fifth grade. I don't think it's fifth grade.
Fifth grade is track and field, cross country, cross country.
In those two.
Yeah, but otherwise it's sixth grade. Um, I don't think that, you, you have to have special permission to have a fifth grader join the team. NHIAM.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we budgeted, I'm just looking at the, my version is a little more clear. You know, we, we budgeted for our B teams in case you need it and three hundred dollars for officials and we ended up not having a B team, so.
For, for how, how many years coming out of B teams?
Um, I, I know this was, Brian went through for last year for the twenty four, twenty five school year and then he did it again for twenty five, twenty six school year.
Just seems like doubling, but yeah, even if those teams would, would our costs double if there, if there were?
Do we have like a.
You would have more officials and, and the coaches.
Right, and we have, we.
And uniforms potentially.
Right, so these budgeted numbers include all of that. But if you took out, if we took out, you know, um, the B team, the B games for boys would be two, about two thousand dollars less if we took out the B team for officials. It would be about twenty six hundred dollars less if we took out the coaches for B team.
When was the last time you guys had a B team?
Yeah, I canna just ask that, I'm not sure.
Oh, sorry, I thought you.
No, it was okay, okay.
I definitely had them when I was here.
Definitely the last two or three years maybe. I mean, since the pandemic, we have not had the, you know, the level of, of student athletes that we've had in the past.
And there's, I mean, my perception is there's also a lot of like travel and club teams.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, those are looking a little popular everywhere.
Right, so the B, the last people play on the A teams, so then there's not as many B teams.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as.
I think we've had a boys B team though. I, I, I wanna, I wanna say we have had soccer at least and basketball. I wanna say that's a part of it all.
Basketball, yes.
Basketball for sure, because there's a, but, so I, let me, like I said, we, we can definitely have more basketball information for you if you.
Basketball for sure. When the athletic director wants to come.
Yeah, you know. He's, he's playing hockey right now. He's always speaking of sports.
So for the musical, for instance.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
That would, the musical, I understand, is a very large undertaking.
Correct.
And would require a lot of commitment by current staff, I assume. If that's who is going to run the musical. And I'm just wondering if there is still an interest in having musical and budgeting for the musical. If there's not the interest in the community or with staff to do musical.
And it's, it's so challenging because we're talking.
Right.
Next year, this is October of this year. We don't know what will happen by October, December, whatever, next year, so.
It's, it's hard because, I mean, I did it for about five years.
Yeah.
And then I just did it as a after-school thing. And then it became part of the music program.
Right.
So the class became that. You know, Michael, aren't you thinking about doing something?
Small vignettes of, of some sort.
Potentially.
Yeah.
But.
But I wouldn't get rid of it because.
What is that fall under? Right, well.
I just.
So that would fall under, um, this will be under, yeah.
Co-curriculars. Co-curriculars. They have all the dues and fees because there was a fee for the musicals. Like to pay for it.
You have to, you have to pay, you have to pay for those.
Absolutely, yes.
The scripts and the rights.
We don't want Disney coming after you, that's for sure.
Right, and they, they usually had a, something for the director, for the assistant director, for the stage manager. And maybe the costumes, it, I mean, they weren't big, but they were stipends for them. But the thing is like, I wouldn't get rid of that because drama is so like really key for a lot of kids. And this is the only chance I might get to do it or it might give them a taste of it, so then they would do it in high school. So the fact that you don't have anybody right now, I wouldn't get rid of it as an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree. I just, if there's not, if it's not feasible that we're going to have a musical, like should we keep budgeting for it? I mean, I was, I was always in my musical, inner physical.
It also doesn't have to be musical. I mean, when I did it every year, it was a play one year, a musical the next year. And I didn't do musicals every year.
I just think we, we have to, you know, consider, those are pretty big numbers of the actual versus the budget. So I think just carrying those, you know, people are shocked when we, like the amount of surplus we have, you know, and like.
Right.
I just think carrying those budget numbers are potential things that are not, you know, not talking about like emergency stuff or budgeting for special ed or stuff like that. It's, I don't know. I just think with B teams, I'd, I'd like to know like how long it's been. I know, I'm not pressuring, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
That's something that, if they're carrying those salaries for coaches and officials and uniforms, all that stuff. I think in terms of trying, like, you know, we haven't talked about our goals yet, but I think probably one of our goals is to, to be to get our proposed budget approved. And I think, you know, any of those efforts and spots like that would be a good spot to try to save a little bit.
Yeah.
And I will say that there, we, if we do try to get the line down and we end up in a default, this is where, this is where the default hurts us because you, you do have to go back to what the number was. And some of the lines, like some of the salary lines can be adjusted, but you know, I don't, I don't know if we budgeted forty two thousand dollars for this year. I, I'd have to go back to last year's numbers to see why that number is so high. And only spent twenty two.
Right. No, I, I get that. I just think that, you know, it's kind of, it's like a, you know, good shade thing to people when they're reviewing it. That like if they see that and it just keeps getting carried and not used and like things that we really do want and need for the school, it may not get approved for those, you know, little reasons like that, you know. When they add up, when they're, because there are so many line items, right?
Yeah, it'd be worth to have a, a more like conference of history from Brian of what's been played every year. And if, you know, like even the cheerleading, like when was the last time we had cheerleading? Yeah, there might be some interest, but if it's not something we've historically done, then that might have to be something that gets on the back burner. I think it's also, I mean, it's hard because we have had historical surplus, but it was not that long ago that we were very close to potentially not having a surplus at all.
Dang.
We were in a budget freeze for an entire year. So every, because of unanticipated special ed costs that came up. So it's, it's easy to look at this and say, well, we could get rid of the cheerleading line and then if someone was interested in cheerleading, we, we could find that hundred dollars. Would be, depends on the year, depends what pops up that year.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there are other opportunities, right? I mean, like my kids do karate, we don't offer that here. You know, there's, I don't know, something that every, every opportunity that hasn't been popular, so. Somebody comes along and wants to cheerlead, and like you said, it's like there's not enough interest, so. But it's just too sound sized. I'd like to see us not carry stuff like that.
I, yeah, I don't disagree. You know, could, you know, there's other avenues, I think. Like if someone were really interested in cheerleading and we got rid of the cheerleading line, could we have a fundraiser for the first year and then budget it for the next year? And I'm sure we could figure it out, but it's easier said than done, I think. When for the past, for the past year, we didn't, we had, you know, a lot of surplus to, to deal with.
I'm just looking at one of the lines, like the after-school enrichment coordinator. We had somebody that was interested in doing that, did it for a couple of years and it is, it's almost, it's almost so much work. But that teacher was like, I, I just don't, I don't wanna do it.
It couldn't do it last year.
Yeah, lots of things were going on and so we had budgeted for it, thinking, well, we have somebody that will continue doing that. And then that person did not wanna do it, I think we also wanted to make that, so.
Yeah, that's hard when it's so person-specific versus, yeah. Teal, let Brian bring us back more info.
Sure. Um, alright, let's see here. I think we're. There's some fees. I'm trying to see if there's anything else on page six. On to page seven. Line sixty three. Again, that's one of those lines that we keep trying to get down to zero because our actuals are zero. We don't need this line, this is for the assessment line. From years past, it was a preschool assessment purchase. But we've gone to a state, the state has required us to change our assessment process and they actually offer that as quote-unquote free. I don't know how long they'll offer it for quote-unquote free, but it has not, we, it has not cost us.
I don't know. For now.
That line, trying to get down to zero because we don't need it.
But.
Yeah.
Are we anticipating that it might not be free at some point?
That's so hard.
Like do, I'm, should we keep it at it all?
Should we keep it at it all?
I, I don't know that you should.
Okay. Because if it, if it is required, we can, we can find another special ed line or put that under.
Okay. That's fine.
And then come back and, you know, try to add a line that's more appropriate when we know better projections. But I don't think it's worth keep hijacking our budget for, I mean, who knows?
Keep it in. Right.
And I actually think that's the regular ed preschool assessment. We would assess both our regular ed students in our preschool program and our special ed. So we would include the special ed, I include the special ed budget line.
Right.
The twelve hundreds. So I think that's the portion that used to be when we would use curriculum gold for all of our preschool students.
Yeah.
But we're not using curriculum right no more.
Okay. So we don't anticipate it?
I, I would say no.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're not closing lines and then not having a place to put things, things.
Mm-hmm.
Become not free from the state.
Yeah, which happens.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
It does.
Uh, so line sixty four through seventy is our, our nurse health equipment line and health books and medical supplies. I guess the, you know, medical supplies, she's practically spent to every dime. We keep that health book and medical AV line at a dollar, just in case for what like Kendra was just saying. I think the health book comes out every other year, so every other year she might purchase something out of that. And she doesn't need any new furniture fixtures. I do, I did, there is a big jump in our replacement equipment to eight hundred and fifty dollars because the audiometer is starting to fail. This was brought to our attention a couple of years ago.
I was like.
It was start, it's a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Was, which you took our test hearing with.
Right.
Uh, so that is starting to go. The, the gentleman that comes in and does the calibration has another piece of equipment that's, I mean, I don't, I know that you look at that eight hundred and fifty dollars as expensive, but cheaper than the, the big machine that she has is a couple thousand dollars.
Right.
So this is a cheaper version of that and does the exact same thing that the big piece of equipment does. So that is starting to fail. It's, there's, it will get, hopefully it'll get us through this year, but we would like to budget for a new one.
I would just request that if we, I'm being optimistic that the budget will pass. But if it does not, that this come to the end of the year, if there is surplus.
Got it. Yeah, good point. Alright, um. Our assembly line, um, this is a line that we've used in the past for maybe to bring in a tiger from Columbus State, they come and do a bullying or a, a, just a grade assembly for kids. We've been fortunate the past couple, I budgeted every year for this line and we've been fortunate in the past couple of years that PTO has provided the funding for our assembly. Every year I think about, oh, we're gonna bring this person to an assembly and the PTO pays for it. Or, and/or Focus, Focus is another big group that will help us pay for things. So I, I kept that line at thirty five hundred dollars. I I kept that line at thirty five hundred dollars in in the future, not knowing whether P T O will pay for it or something during that. Um our curriculum stipends line, which is line seventy two, is at zero, but I know that that line, I'm going to request fifteen thousand in that line. Uh this is our summer curriculum work line, so any teacher that comes or staff that comes in over the summer and does curriculum work, which we've had every single year, are from kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade. Um work on both E L A as well as math, as well as science, as well as social studies, whatever the need is. Towards the end of the year, I always ask my um folks what kind of summer curriculum work they wanna do. This is a line that I've also, uh some maybe some, we have some new teachers that are coming in and or a teacher that's changing grade levels. I might give them um a couple of hours to to come in and do some work over the summer to get ready for their new curriculum. Uh we did do that this past school here. Uh every year I try to spend as, we get as close to twelve thousand as possible, but I could definitely some sometimes I have to say no to um curriculum work that's being done. And in addition to that, we held a twenty five dollars um for an hour for the curriculum work and I would like to bump that up to thirty dollars. Uh it's been at twenty five dollars. When I first started, I think it was twenty when I first started here, so my first year, we bumped it up to twenty five, but it's been now since my eighth year, so we've, it it's time to bump that up a little bit. On page eight. And then line seventy four, that's a contractual line. Um line seventy five is in-service training. The actual was twenty one fifty. Uh we go back to the default number of thirty five hundred. This pays for C for C D and C P R. That's in the account note. The next line uh is line seventy six.
Question, you got a question?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I'm speaking up, sorry.
That's okay.
Did so how how do we overspend on staff reimbursement, of course reimbursement? Thought that there was like a certain amount for that.
Yep, so um I think we talked about this a little while ago, but when there's money that's left over in the other line that
Professional line.
So there's two lines within the um contract that teachers can spend. There's course reimbursement for the college courses, and then there's professional development, which is like um
Which work.
a training or workshops that they're gonna go to and they they have contractual obligations. If there's money left over in the professional development line, that can be applied to the course reimbursement if there were teachers that went above and beyond or were over the line that they were spending. They just can't go over the total between those two lines. So that's why you'll see that one over.
Um the, let's see. Of course, and then.
So then the other one would be like exactly as the full.
That line is line ninety and that line was actual, so line ninety on page ten. The actual for that was nine thousand dollars, seven nine thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and contractual, we have to put nineteen thousand dollars in there.
So they didn't, they didn't spend even collectively the total amount that they could have spent.
So a bunch of our people could have done staff course reimbursement.
Yep.
And they did. So until we we had basically to freeze our course line, I think by December, we had spent the total thirty one thousand. And um so teachers that were taking courses were told that if you're gonna take a course in the spring that to put it into the form of U's and that I would track that. And two teachers took a course in the spring and got reimbursed because we had money left over in their workshop line. But like Jess um has mentioned before, that line still, it was paid for a course, so it came out, but even though the workshop line money was used, it was it was it came out of the staff course reimbursement line.
Yeah, you have to reflect the funds on each line it applies to.
And I assume, I'm sure we're gonna get there, but line ninety, is that also for the collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah, that's the P D line?
Yes. Could we also do a catalog for that one?
Oh, yeah.
Line ninety, yeah, that's the one I'm that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, so I think the one above it
Oh, that's the mom's.
is actually not for the C B A. This was not a C, are they part of the C B A?
The workshop reimbursement for non- private, it's paraeducators, yes.
It's for the C A. Okay, yeah.
And paraeducators tend to, they do a lot of their P D e-mails.
Got it.
Um or they'll do webinars or they'll do, like we just had a professional day on Friday and they participated in um a great workshop with some of our special ed case managers, so.
But there are also obligations in the C B A.
Correct.
There is.
Correct.
And we have to have five thousand dollars in adjustments. They, there are people that want to.
Yeah.
Um.
Gels.
Yep, so that is, I'm on line seventy six now, and so that is our staff training line and um this is the line that we have put in to cover our announce conference, so that's doing the legal middle schools and um I'm I'll be honest, I think I I can't remember if we had money in that line because the the actual says zero, but we did go send a team last year to announce.
Oh, so we could have heard that.
I felt like it was paid for out of P D.
Lines.
Some of the teachers paid for it out of the P D lines, I don't know.
Because I remember seeing the grid and it had gels with several people and it was on the P D line.
Yep, and I don't think we had any money in that line last year, so we had to, the teachers used their that their workshop line, yeah.
The P D, yeah.
Well, we would have had two thousand.
Yeah. So this is one of those lines that maybe Amber could explain a little more because I'm I'm
Sure.
positive we didn't have money in that line before, so yeah, I'll I'll, we'll have to go back and double check that. I'll put a star next to it so I can get some.
Yeah, I just, um because I know people did go to gels, I just wonder if we can reflect that
Mm-hmm.
somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that the school board approved it as a as an item, I think.
Mm-hmm, right, because we paid for um lodging as well, because they had on Sunday, they see all that, and it's already Monday, they paid for
Right, right. Translocation.
Their food allowance, uh we paid for gas, amount which um they carpool, but we still paid for that.
Right.
Uh part of the money might have come out of um Brian's line as well because uh administrators have a line, so his money would have come out of that line. It's which is separate then certified staff line. There's an admin P D line.
Sure.
Um, all right, so we're down to seventy seven, that hasn't that hasn't changed much. Uh then we're into the library section. Um line eighty, that again is the line that's been moved to the tech line, but last year we did purchase. I think that covers the uh couple of the couple of Sora and Atrium, you know, and are coming out of that line. That's why the actuals are a little uh are a little hundred and a little bit on that line. Same library slide, she's stayed around ninety. Uh this is the, this is the area too where she's been trying to move, put some things at a dollar, so we can move that line to another line. Um library periodicals, which is line eighty two. Uh that we we, because we ended up in fault, we have five hundred dollars back, which she spent last year, but we're trying to move that line to line eighty seven. And line eighty seven is audio visual materials, so she had, uh she has two hundred dollars in that line, but she's asking for seven hundred and it's more of a, we have funds.
So so we're
So she's, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, about line eighty, Sora is not gonna be paid from that line going forward. I think I saw it in a different line.
Yeah.
Of Sora and and World Book, World Book two probably is what she used it for.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah.
But going forward, we don't need money in that one for those programs.
We do know. So if um the library educational tech line pays for Sora, World Book, um and we moved both of those to educational technology subscriptions. Uh library also pays for Sora and Atrium. And a new program that we're getting called VOKS, V O O K S.
Okay, I see it on the eleven. Okay, so basically these funds are then gonna be moved
Correct.
to line eleven.
Mm-hmm.
But the proposed budget did go up from what you spent, so is that just that things are more expensive? I mean, did you reduce the Sora and the whatever it was, the the library tech?
Which line are you looking at?
Eleven.
Oh, yeah.
Like you just said, those lines are gonna go into library tech line.
Well, library tech's going into
Just.
Educational.
Oh, it's
Line eleven.
It's moving into it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
So the that
Okay.
that one thousand one thirty five is gonna be
Yeah.
paid by line eleven.
Okay.
All right, sorry, which is gonna be twenty five two value, I don't think, with that line.
Got it.
Okay.
Any questions about those library lines? The actuals for A V repairs have been a dollar. I'm trying to move that two fifty into another line. Fall goes back to the line that it was in originally in. The audio visual equipment line did go up a little bit. That's line eighty eight, from two hundred to four fifty to replace outdated audiobook holders. There's new technology to load audiobooks, so um she's she's asking for a little bit more money so that she can purchase those. Page ten. Again, those are, that line eighty nine is contractual and that line ninety is contractual. Regardless of what the actuals say. And regardless of the default. I'm on page eleven. That's the rest of those numbers as well. I'm on page eleven and I'm on line number one ten. Extra assignment stipends. So this line pays for our substitute coordinator. Every year we've tried to get some money in there and we end up in a default. As you can see, the actual is worth thirty seven hundred. Um our stipend, the substitute pro coordinator process is reduced a little bit in terms of responsibility. Um and so we're looking to put twenty five hundred dollars in there to cover, even though it says zero right there right now, we're looking to put twenty five hundred dollars in that line to cover the substitute coordinator stipend. Currently, Mrs. Withy is the substitute coordinator, but Mrs. Withy doesn't take a stipend. That's other duties as assigned, right? Mrs. Robinson and Bickford.
Yes. Are you guys um moving to some kind of online program too where people type in and
Yes, frontline, that's, we're waiting for that portal to open, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Which is why some of the duties will be reduced. Uh it's not gonna eliminate fully because it doesn't account for like callouts the day of. So people that still would call out the day of, you still need somebody to plan that day and man those phone calls. It's just the planned absences that are accounted for.
That's kind of like why you're thinking it'd be less, it was thirty seven, but now twenty five.
Correct. Um the next line down is one eleven, that's professional dues, that did not change. In the professional dues, that is um administration, like National Association for Special Education Administrators. Uh I'm on page twelve and I'm down to line one sixteen is our next line.
I have a question, but um
Yeah.
It says some of these in a different.
What what page do you want?
Uh eleven.
Okay.
It's like even like the secretary's salaries there, if the actual and then the the um default and then the difference.
Yeah, the those lines haven't been filled out yet.
That would be Amber for the next round. Any personnel stuff, Amber's gonna do the next round.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so all salary stuff, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, you'll get for the next round for our meeting in November, you'll get a complete budget and then you guys will have a couple meetings to digest that, ask questions, make some adjustments where we need to make adjustments before it goes to M B C. So you can just have a little bit of a
Yeah, and that it'll have the whole roster of all the people and what their pay is.
Yeah. Yeah.
But there are, if you're asking about the difference, just as a primer, so the certified staff and those under the collective bargaining agreements, if they get raises, those are included in the default budget. Is that what you're asking about? Like that, so the actual and the default number might be different because we may have agreed to a raise for a particular group of people or a particular staff member that isn't reflected in the default budget.
So like you guys.
I I didn't know we talked about that before. I was just, no, I was just seeing like that number over here and I was saying, because this is a spreadsheet, how is how is that gonna work on the last?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, the The bottom line is not
It won't make sense this round, but it will next round.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's partial right now. Um and I know you won't be here for that November meeting, but if you have questions that you wanna email, like if you're able to see it in the drive and you wanna email questions, we can make sure we get answers to that.
We'll also review it at the second, yeah, budget meeting in November and also in December.
Yeah, you'll have, you'll have some time.
Mm-hmm. I'm on page twelve. Our next line is one sixteen, one seventeen. That one seventeen line, that's the three copiers and printers in the building, so that's one umbrella. All our copiers and printers are under that that line. For equipment repair maintenance agreements. Can be tricky because you'd be meaning to think facilities, but that particular one is ours. Um it's going down. So these lines are just a flat. Um are the only one would be line one twenty five, that's another one, computer software that we don't need. That's specifically for office staff, so any updates that they get are usually under an umbrella of Google Enterprise or something like that, so um trying to get that.
We pay more at the S A U level, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Um line number one twenty six, every year I try to get a little bit of money to get some new equipment and furniture in the office. This is office line. Um but we end up back at a dollar for default.
What are specific things that you need in the office?
Um I I will get like um you know, made of wood, we need some, oh gosh.
He said something right away.
What's that?
An adding machine.
And yeah, a new
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Something, some
An adding machine.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get Trish one once she retires, that'll be. Uh and so some of the equipment, because we, I do have five hundred dollars in the um replacements, so some things we can get now, but if there is something new that we needed, like a new T V, I wanted a new T V for the office to kind of have a a central location, um we, I finally, we just used grandly to get it, so there, so there, default budget, take that. Um new computer equipment, I did keep that at a dollar. We haven't had to use that line in a long time, but um if somebody, if an office staff member's computer goes or something like that, we might need, so we keep that one at a dollar in case we need to, we do need to. Uh replacement furniture fixtures, that's another office line that I've tried to get money into and that might be to replace and maybe to replace the adding machine or get it, whatever, replace chairs or replace an office desk or, yeah. Um the next line I think is our commencement line, that's um you know, our default is six hundred dollars, but we have traditionally, I actually, we've often had to come to the board and ask for some surplus money to pay. We have a big eighth grade class um that's graduating this year, so probably go over that six hundred dollars. I know this is for next year, but we do, we do generally go over that line.
What does that cover for commencement?
Uh it covers
Caps and gowns.
Caps and gowns, caps and gowns. It covers It covers awards, getting uh awards engraved, uh it covers um.
Cord things.
Yeah, the cords, it covers.
And that that's what we get since.
Yeah, right, we have to, we have to come and get surplus money for usually every year, yeah.
But, yeah.
Um alright, just going down, this next area is.
And just for context about commencement, we did, there was a year that we.
We talked about buying them.
Yes, then there was a year that we administration decided we weren't gonna do caps and gowns and there was near a riot about it.
Near. Some, and then there was all kinds of.
Parents were very upset.
They were and they per- then they started purchasing their own, so we just.
Their own.
But you're right, Ellen, we did, because I was like kind of struggling with like night hubs type thing and yeah, we talked about getting ahead of it for this year.
We did talk about possibly buying them, yeah. Yeah. Right.
Buying it. And Brian brought up about, I think having to clean them too or something.
Mm.
And store them.
Yeah.
So it'd be worth looking at that cost.
Mm-hmm.
Can I just say as a personal advice, you'd have to buy much better quality because I have the boys blues from fifteen, eighteen years ago and they turned to purple, they just color as
Oh.
as time goes on, so if you're gonna store them, they would have to be better quality.
So we could certainly look, I mean, we could price out the cost of buying fifty caps and gowns or something. That will be, plus the cost of.
You'd have to get more than that too, because the the um classes are all the time sixty. I know we've had some that were in seventies, but I don't think we have for a while.
We'd have to get extras, just a piece of stains, rips.
Not for a while. Well, you also have to figure out, you know, how many girls and how many boys, so you have to have, you know, extras for both.
How many girls, how many boys, yeah.
I think we all.
Not necessarily, maybe we're all on how long.
Yeah, I'm saying we all do.
Oh, good, yeah.
Oh, you.
They want?
Yeah.
It's everybody's.
Okay.
Okay, I've only seen blue.
Good.
Oh, okay. They always have white and blue before, but when I was here.
Yeah, we can look at getting.
So that makes more sense.
For instance, oh, and then what the cost of cleaning, dry cleaning would be over here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there are other schools in the S A U that.
No, not, okay. Maybe the P T, P two, okay, just more.
Not great for them.
Yeah.
No, I think it depends on the school, I think everyone's kind of graduation ceremony is a little different, um.
High school, they may have to pay for them.
I think. High school is very different, yes, they, that would be something different, but other middle eighth grade ceremonies, I don't know, I don't think most of them have caps and gowns, but here it's been such a long tradition that parents get.
I'm saying we could, we could do it and say no more caps and gowns.
Yeah.
My grand, my granddaughter has a gown, cap and gown.
For kindergarten.
Four.
Yeah.
No, she's in kindergarten now, this was at a preschool, yeah, crazy.
Here?
No, 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 I was in Concord.
Oh. Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we could do it, um there will be a lot of backlash. I think we would have to let them know now that we're doing it, so that they can prepare themselves for the spring and say.
Well, it'd be.
For next year, yeah.
Well, yeah. And say, we also won't allow people to purchase their own and wear them during the ceremony. They could wear them for pictures if they wanted, I suppose.
Why wouldn't we allow them to purchase their own?
Cause you'd want a uniform, like if one kid shows up in a cap and gown but four don't, like you, that wouldn't be a good look.
When they wear. No, I mean, if we, if if we bought our own, so we have them for all the kids, but somebody wanted to purchase their own because they wanted to keep it.
Oh, wow.
Oh, that's something different.
That wouldn't matter, as long as it's the same color.
Yeah, I'm just saying if we decided not to do caps and gowns at all.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think we should, personally, I don't think we should do that, it's been such a long tradition, I I have, I understand why the parents were upset about it and it's huge, a lot of these kids are in school here from kindergarten to eighth grade, that's huge. That really is, that's a long time, you really should celebrate it. That's my.
Yeah, I mean, just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
It was, it was a thing.
It was.
It was def- it was definitely a thing. Okay.
Alright, I'm down the line, I think I'm down line one thirty-five, uh commencement, then we went down to custodian mileage and cleaning supplies. That's a line that is tricky every year, sometimes he's close to twenty-five, sometimes he's close to eighteen, his actuals uh for last year were was seventeen, seven fifty-four. And that might be a line that we take a look at.
It's zero.
Yeah.
That sounds, that sounds right again.
The proposed budget is zero.
That would be something that Amber will put in for the next round.
Yeah, cause that's an Amber level agreement.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so anywhere you see a zero is because, unless I've mentioned it, it's because it's a long title.
But it. But it would be zero anyway, wouldn't it?
Cause we bought it, right?
Yeah.
So it would be zero.
Like it might be something you might wanna get rid of that line.
Yeah, I'm just saying. The agreement is, it, I mean, putting a zero in and having a pass budget would would effectively get rid of the line. But for three years.
For three years, you have to have a zero for three years to even give rid of the line.
But I also think that if there's a default, hmm.
We might want, could we change it to modular repair?
I don't think you can just change lines, you can't change a line like that.
I mean, you can, but it has to be like similar intent, now I know that repair and rental are the same intent.
No, they're not.
But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that thirty-two, I don't think it would carry over in default.
Yeah, I didn't even mean that amount, I was just thinking in the future when we have to do some, we might have to.
Yeah, we can make a note of it and have Amber address that when she's here, yeah.
I guess you would just put that in in one of the facilities budgets and just treat your modulars like the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he Chris does have a couple, a couple thousand dollars in that he's added to his um maintenance supply to cover an increase of things that he might need for the modular classrooms or that he does need for the modular classrooms. Um. The next line down that is significant would be line one forty-one. Um that is, he's asking for eleven thousand dollars to purchase a, a new auto scrubber, brusher, burnisher, sorry.
Is that in the kitchen or is that?
No, that's.
Is that the shit, I mean, what is this, what is it?
Auto scrubber, burnisher.
Is it for the floors?
Yes, yes.
Oh, for the floors, okay. Thanks for cleaning like hallways and things like.
Okay, I was thinking, you know.
Classrooms, yeah.
And for the uh the gym floor.
Chimneys.
Is it like a waxer too, does it do the like?
I I I don't really know, just.
A bad, bad.
Burnishes. The burnishes.
Well, the burn, the burnish part is for the gym floor, the auto scrubber part is for, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
Those things are still getting expensive.
Yeah, they're very expensive.
Then just asking about line one thirty-nine, is that one of the ones that you updated?
Equipment new, yes, so I think that was that wa- the watering machine that he purchased.
The pump thing for the field.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we don't, there's no other anticipated equipment?
Not new, I don't think so, he originally had the burnisher in um new, but we we have.
But you have.
We have it assessed to be replaced, yeah. I'm on page fourteen. And I'm in line one forty-four. This is maintenance supplies. This is where he's increased a little bit because of what he might need for modular to maintain the modulars as well. So this would be air filters, filters and bags, paint, um gas and oil for equipment. Like all recycling. Ceiling tiles, those kinds of things, water filters for water filling machines. And again, that's in appendix C, maintenance supplies is appendix C. So it just highlights everything that he gives two pages, so it's everything that he. In the classes associated for next year, for middle and high school year as well as next year.
Increase of about a third. One forty-seven.
Chris, already, which line are you talking about?
I was looking at one forty-seven.
Well.
Contracted services.
It it's a, so that would be a line that the default is ninety-nine thousand, but the actual was two hundred ninety-two thousand, so that would've been a line that we use trust fund money to offset, but he didn't, he didn't have two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in that line to start the school year, so.
But it, but your budget is a hundred and three.
So, yeah, so he's asked for a hundred and three and that, and again, that's also on the um appendix C and that is um on page, this is well, um contract services includes our absolute data destruction, includes all the things that we need in the school as well as.
This also included your um maintenance um the focus, the contracted maintenance company.
Yeah, but I took that out, cause that would've put it over two hundred thousand.
Right, so with the two ninety-two.
Right, but not with the two ninety-two.
Oh.
It did the, what's the company called?
Historia.
Yeah, it's still the.
City, citywide.
Citywide, thank you. So your citywide contract was in line one forty-seven, but it's taken out because we're trying to account for that as hiring employees versus continuing with citywide.
Right.
So that's why it's a huge reduction technically from what was actually set.
And that, and that money came from our maintenance supply, our maintenance uh salary line.
Because in an ideal world, we would have.
Correct.
Salaries.
The salary is. We're budgeting for having employees, not.
Okay.
Oh, you know, hundreds of some odd thousand, yeah, yeah, hundreds of services.
Of course, he did originally put that in there and I was like, oof, that brings your line up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars that uh and we can't budget for there and budget for the salary line and, you know.
We're saying, yeah. And a big choice.
Yeah.
Right, that would be, would effectively be saying we're not hiring.
That's what I said, you 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 do this and you get the a budget passed, you will never see those lines again for your nighttime custodians.
Well, ideally you wanna hire old people, cause you have better control over your output and cost and hopefully you have local people, so it means a benefit to the community.
Hundred percent. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So it it's better to hire old people.
Alright, I'm on page fifteen. Line one fifty-two is our next line and that is athletic trips, this is another line and every year we try to that's for uh fi- field, for athletic, for um the buses. Uh and we have not been able to get buses for our athletics since the pandemic. We're very fortunate.
Because the company wasn't able to give us.
Oh, correct, correct, we had the money in there, every year we budget for it, um but
Yeah.
every year we can't get buses to get our kids from here to Epsom or Epsom or here to Barrington or wherever. Um and we are very fortunate to have families that want carpooling. Lisa can attest to that one, she's calling for, we need so-and-so and so-and-so and so-and-so and so-and-so. As they all pile into a car and cross-country meet or a soccer game. Very fortunate to live in a community that fix each other each other. I'm on line one fifty-three. And that's our field trip line and I every year try to bump it up a little bit, the average cost of a field trip. Probably about five hundred dollars now for our, for our kids to take a field trip somewhere. And we try to give every grade level a bus, um including our six, seven, eight, including our magnets and advisories. Oh, five hundred dollars, would you say is the average cost of a field trip now?
Mm-hmm.
If not more.
Oh, more, most of them are more.
Yeah.
Trips that used to be a couple hundred dollars were down around five hundred.
Uh just.
I'm adding.
Including the bus fare.
That's field trip line is only buses.
That is nothing.
Yeah, it's only transportation, um yeah, it doesn't include, you know, costs to get into the, cause that's usually something.
Yeah. Here, I just favor that.
Either either student activity account, if they have a like fifth grade, pays for their Boston trip, fund fundraising and uses the student activity account. So they, you know, some of the paper trip. Um but you know, if you're gonna go to the Apple or two, that might cost you an hour to get there, right, get you a pack of apples, but it won't cost you for the bus. But if you take another field trip, you you have to pay for the bus, you know what I mean, like, so we give one, each grade gets a field trip from the budget.
One grade. On debt.
And if they wanna go somewhere else, then they might pay, pass that on onto students. Or they're able to pull up some student activity. And I think that's the last, my la- that's it for me. Um so we're only asking for a mere six hundred and seventy-nine thousand out of a twenty million dollar budget.
It, I didn't, I mean, from our. No, so.
No.
It's the curriculum stuff and this doesn't even have um.
Yeah, this is just.
Facilities, it makes up one to two percent of our budget, um so it is.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the majority of your budget is personnel.
Personnel, special.
Special education.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
High school. Alright. Questions, thoughts, comments? We will have lots more budget discussions, but um if there's specific questions or things that you'd like see in the in, in the interim, we can just send just an email and time, we can probably get them.
That's, I think what came out of what we talked about, one thing was about the um, you know, the B Ts, the how long it's been since we've done theater, that kind of stuff, so we have that information to decide if we wanna reduce the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything, anything else?
I'm just trying to think of.
B Ts.
Um, there is something I agree.
Any of the things that haven't been coached for a long time.
Oh, like, what, like, has there ever been a musical or?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so do we know like what, you know, what that that cost ballpark would be?
Uh it cost, so the stipend that is given is the stipend, we don't say, well, it could be twenty-two hundred, it could be, it's eighteen hundred dollars is the stipend.
Yeah, yeah.
The royalty.
The actual royalties on.
Like five hundred, that's what it used to be, I don't know what it is, but you, I mean, you don't have to do a musical either unless it's your music department, obviously they're gonna do it.
Yeah.
You would still pay, you would pay for scripts though, you have to pay for the rights, yeah.
Yeah.
And the.
And the protection.
The costumes.
There are a lot, there are a lot though that don't have royalties, you can get a lot of plays and you don't have to pay royalties just as vice groups.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm losing.
Uh you had mentioned costumes as well, so I was curious what it, what.
Costumes. Yeah, we usually that, we usually just had, we gave a stipend to the person who did the cautions, but we didn't really pay much for cautions, we tried to just get stuff together.
Yeah, a lot of times people donate things or like get thrift shop or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Try to find, it's, that's very inexpensive and props too.
Yeah. Yeah.
So ballpark, twenty-five hundred bucks.
It's probably a reasonable ballpark, yeah. I think for a musical, I think a play would be cheaper, but yeah.
Um.
Yeah, and what, how many, I guess how many teams are not being fielded that are accounted for in that one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they gave us a list last year of everything.
They were highlighting of.
It's, it's.
Just look through it, yeah.
Sorry, Ellen. No, I was just saying last year, remember you guys gave us a list of all the different ones that we have for stuff, yeah.
No, we have, we have that.
Yeah, that's.
Right, so we just need to know how long it's been, oh, I didn't look at this.
It's a year permanent. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and they're highlighted too.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately you have a
Black line.
I have my copy, so.
You can see what's highlighted.
Hi.
In the drive, it's colored.
Yeah, in the drive it is colored, um but I uh I know for a fact that a boy's
Yeah.
um I I mean, it is, it is, I don't know, I would love to look that up.
Right, yeah, so we have this, but we don't have like which, which teams are not being.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna know.
Brian's gonna come back with.
Yeah, yeah, we just wanna know how long it's been since we've had a B team in this, yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
Was there something else though that we were looking for? Trying to think, I'm just trying to summarize what we went through.
Oh, the fly line, one down, fly line.
Right.
Yeah.
Um for science.
Well, yeah.
Uh it's mostly science, but I will put some science just in.
Yeah.
I think it was tech, I think it was tech also.
Yeah, I'll, in tech.
In tech.
And how many um of the those interns are they? And how many um of the those interns are they?
It's hard to say.
Does it? Is it just music?
Well, we had we well, when I first started here, we had probably six to eight interns in grades K through five.
Yeah.
Um last year we had two music interns and now we got art interns. So it really does depend on a year and we really don't know until until probably November, December. So I'd have a better idea before the budget was had to be done done. I might have one idea um.
Even. Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering if um if there was um like is there a certain amount per um or there must is there a fixed type an amount per uh intern?
Uh so I it depends. So for example, when we had, you know, six or eight or whatever, we took that subject. We had that's how much we had.
Yeah.
So then we divided it between all um but you know with seventy hundred dollars, we're not gonna give a music intern bless your hearts
Okay.
uh two hundred thousand dollar dollars, right? So I think I think we did five hundred. I think we did five hundred.
Yeah. Right. About that.
Yeah. So that's what I figured and for music and our interns um is often just a semester. Our our UNH interns that were in K to five, it was a full year.
Yeah, and they and they've took they've changed it now. UNH is just using the schools closer than because they don't have very many interns. They don't have people going in to become teachers.
But. Yeah. Well, and it's easier for the UNH professors that have to come up and observe to come all the way to Deerfield um was a lot for them. So they tried to centralize them um so we don't get as many experience. But we do have wonderful music interns and art interns. I can talk to um Sarah Chase, our art teacher is uh one of the teachers at UNH. She's a she teaches the bookend classes. So she usually knows if we have some in some interest of the state of an art intern coming out. Again, art is first semester because none of the other schools like I've stated that so. And we considered um five hundred. That's what I was thinking for looking at as well as we had four interns. But if we end up in the top.
Yeah, no, I was. You're setting it race because of because of what the uh the default was. So much higher than we're starting.
Now, it's from years ago. I mean when.
Seventy hundred dollars has been since I've been here. It's been seventy hundred dollars since I started years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's a huge benefit to the school to have interns.
Oh, hundred percent.
Huge benefit. So it I definitely would say that's something that I wouldn't necessarily want to reduce. I understand what you're saying, but if UNH also hasn't gotten in plugs of
Hundred percent.
students coming in, then they might be sending them our way again.
Yeah, and and again.
Yeah, I know. I wasn't saying to get rid of it completely. I was just I I was just curious what the yeah, the default being so much higher and stuff.
Right, yeah.
What they want is so high.
Yeah.
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 Mm-hmm.
So and then it's a you know, she's proposed it as a reduction anyway, so.
Right.
That's why I was curious.
We do get other schools like SNU has we do um as with trying to and the other thing is it's a it's a huge commitment for our teachers too to take on an intern or a student teacher.
Yes.
That is a big commitment as well. Um so but there is a huge benefit. There really is. We also have speech interns, but they don't they can't get paid because of their they're so specialized and they belong to completely different organization. Even our OTs and speech people cannot use professional development done in school. It has to be through the organization. So they're very specialized and they cannot accept it um and and uh the stipend.
Um okay. So we moved CIP to informational. So we will move on to board goals. I was just looking in the pack and I don't see them in here.
What was yeah, so Camden was saying I went I did go Camden. I did go to the drive and I'm like, oh, there really are a few things in here that well, one of them is two hundred and something pages. So there was no way I was printing that, but board goals was one thing that I did not. I'm happy to print it quickly if anybody wants it.
No, I I um I can't get on the internet right now.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It was uh I haven't just kind of stolen the last two times I put it in my phone, but it's not popping up as um as an available network.
Personal devices.
You want this information to be public?
That.
Personal media.
If you are.
Yeah, it's the it's the wife. It's the. No, yeah, I know, but I didn't know if you wanted it to be on video or all to have.
Oh, you want me to say it out loud?
No, I'm not. I'm just asking before you say it out loud.
It's for zero.
Right, you can actually get it if you go to the October first meeting. It's in the stuff there unless you've changed it since then. Have you changed it since then?
I just.
I just I just.
Nope.
Mine worked.
Can you turn your wifi off and then turn it on?
Actually, I have to draft twenty four, twenty five goals.
Yeah.
For this that personal device is this one right there. You're welcome. You're welcome. Chair gotcha. Usually it's a donut.
Yeah, so it's in the drive. It says seven D.
Do you want me to print is do you need a copy, Andrew? Do you want me to print it for you? Alright.
Sorry. No, no, just no. See, but this is I didn't get these to Jess before the public uh the public packet.
Yeah, we'll do ours then.
So so it's an example of something that's not going to be in the public packet, but for board members, it is in the drive. So we just.
And it will be available.
It will be. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the drive where?
Um.
There's folded Deerfield School.
Um board goals. For the for ten fifteen meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll move it into the board goals after it's approved.
Do you want to use my computer to look at it?
No.
Bigger.
I'm sorry, last time what was it under um ten fifteen?
Um seven D. Seven letter D.
So listening to the the fellow from the school board made me think about possibly adding to our goals about superintendent evaluation, right?
Yeah.
Including a strategic planning. And I know Camden you said before about getting our budget passed. So those were kind of three things that just took out for me.
You could add the budget passing into the financial stewardship piece that we already got potentially.
Yeah. Are are those all three of those um under that those what do we call it the topics that we were?
Pretty much, yeah.
Strategic planning.
Superintendent eval.
And superintendent eval.
I think the only thing you don't really clearly have down here is there aren't anything or a policy, but I think within each of these categories are you know, responsibility to adopt policy that meets the needs of those areas.
Right. Um so do we want to add something about strategic planning and if so, where do we want to add it and or we could create a new category?
I I think we should and I think it's really a good idea for us to do some strategic planning.
Mm-hmm.
And we've talked a lot about the superintendent eval and I mean uh if we make it a goal and it's something that we would
Yeah.
focus on, but I almost feel like the str- strategic planning isn't a different doesn't really fit.
Could you do just um like long-term planning and then have strategic plan under that and superintendent eval?
Yeah, yeah, make that a a different one.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Number four.
Okay, and obviously these are just drafted. So if you want to change any of them, if you want to add other things to them um if we want to get rid of any of them.
Yeah, I'm glad you have the CIP in there too. That was something I've been thinking about also.
Yeah, so um oh yeah, okay, so that's the CIP. We can we can also just like that meeting that we had before with Chris just about identifying things that
Mm-hmm.
to plan for um.
Yeah, it's a starting point.
Right.
Right.
Right, right, no, I'm just saying that um yeah, I think I was confusing the um the tax impact stuff with the CIP and stuff. So any of those improvements.
But it's it is connected though.
Yeah.
I know they are right, but but the the CIP will be the overall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
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 It might include your impact fee.
Right.
Projects in there that might be like a separate call and and really the CIP and we can get into this actually. I'm gonna do talk about CIP itself. Nevermind.
Yeah, I mean so I mean the two items under A and B might be repetitive. I don't know if.
I think it's good to separate them because.
Right, because there are facility needs that aren't going to be part of the CIP that we still need to address.
Yeah.
Do you think we should um just kind of table this for now until we have the other members have a chance to review this?
Um I'm fine with that, but it is but it is just another meeting that we won't have finalized goals. So just.
I I would suggest that we add the stuff we talked about if we're okay with that, if we're okay about it.
Yeah.
And then that draft would then be looked at at the next meeting weekend.
To potentially finalize.
To potentially finalize.
Yes. And obviously if the members who aren't here have thoughts, concerns, questions.
That would be ideal.
Ideas. Uh yeah, um let me know. Because these are just these are just like brain brain thoughts.
Right.
So I'm not offended if you want to change them.
I could.
But um if we did want to edit anything, we can send them based on what we talked about in front. Can send them just in the video to you?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, you can collect our comments, right? Chris, you we've charged you with doing this. It's not a meeting.
Or you can send them to me and I get them to you.
Yeah.
That way. And then I can consolidate all the feedback.
Sure.
And then push that up to you. I think that's what you.
Okay. Very easy. And and.
Talking about making more work for you.
Like you said, governance is never efficient.
Correct.
Great.
Cool, um.
Will you just um send out an email or something and see if you edit that?
Yes, yeah, I'm happy to do that like tomorrow. Okay. Superintendent goals.
Alright. Um we hadn't talked about how you wanted me to present my goals. So I I put together just a draft of goals that I was thinking. So I can go through the couple of goals that I talked about. I did put goals and objectives and things like that, but I wanted to get the pulse on if you thought these goals were headed in the right direction and then I will edit based on your feedback tonight and then put that into the drive for next time. Um so I had district policies. I had a goal that I will ensure that all district policies are up to date and relevant and that there is a review process in place for continued review. Uh and it would be measured by a presentation to the school board reviewing a policy binder. So the goal would be to have a three-year cycle. Every three years, every single policy is reviewed and updated so that we don't fall behind again for twenty years.
No.
Oh, like previously. So um that would be and the objectives go into a little bit more detail regarding policy. Um community communication and outreach. Uh continue to improve communication with the community, town offices and school board to ensure that all members have information necessary to be informed. Be measured by a checklist of community communications and outreach efforts that have been completed over the three years. Because I have a three-year contract, so it'll be the culmination of that three-year um cycle. And then I've got objectives listed below that for community communication outreach. Visible and present. I'll connect with the school community at a variety of school and community functions and via school walkthroughs. Uh it'll be measured by a log of community events that I've attended and school visits completed um of school buildings. So and you had raised a question around, well, how do we know? So
Not that I'm doubting you, but I just I don't know.
my 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 lifetime career of special education brain was already thinking that.
Yes.
So I I have a tendency to make goals based on by this date, this will happen and this is how it's gonna be measured. So within each of those goals and even my objective, it's there's a date, what's to be done and then how it's gonna be measured. So that hopefully you would have tools to say whether I did it or not. Uh and then I had resource management. So I will ensure that uh financial and staffing decisions are made with best interest of students and with the least impact on taxpayers possible without reducing the quality of education for students. It'll be measured by the completion of the objectives below. Um and then I've got more scripted objectives below that. They're a little bit more specific. So I don't know if those are on the right track of what you were thinking. Um if you have.
I was thi- I was thinking about um I'd really love to have one of your goals be about the climate surveys that we've been doing. And um you know, like what are you finding from that? What what things are changing, you know, to make that like a really important thing.
I think I might be able to fit that into one of my objectives. I had I had something that kind of touched on school climate. So I think that are visible and present. Um I might be able to make an objective in there that is around that because I think some of my objectives for that one were that I would be present um at a minimum of five district events each year. Uh I want sure that attendance is equitable among each of the buildings and grade levels. I also wrote these goals that could be between Pembroke and Deerfield, not just Deerfield specific. With a minimum of three visits per school building to each quarter. Um will be visible and present at all school uh buildings, engaging in learning walkthroughs, meeting with building level administrators, teachers and staff as appropriate. Uh will attend at community events and ensure the district has presence at community functions as appropriate. I could put a culture climate thing in there or I've got one uh I think resource management. I talk about evaluate systems for evaluation of principal and staff.
That might fit that might fit in there better.
So I might put that in resource management maybe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um I think I could build objective in there.
I just like that's something that I would like to hear about periodically and I know like we had the first one and
Yep.
I know Kristen, you talked about stuff that you had done in in your um PLCs and stuff, but then when I asked about the update, I found that you had a second one. I didn't even know you had a second one. So I don't you know, I don't really know.
Yeah, I think you brought the the first one or second one because I brought the data for the second one.
No, no, I saw it, but I didn't know that we were doing a second one.
Okay. Oh, so the intent is for us to do it every year.
Like I was. I am I was wondering what's the update? It must have been done from the first one and then the data came that you had second one.
Yes. Oh, okay.
So it's just that I'd like to be aware of like updated as to what's been done and how you know how are we improving things.
Uh yeah. 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 Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think the first year was sort of talked about as sort of setting a benchmark. So like
Yeah.
can we compare year to year? Have we improved in any of the areas or?
Yep.
I know it's hard because different people respond each year.
Okay.
Yeah, but it gives you a trend and now we've got two years' data. So by the end of this year, we should have a basic overview of really
Yeah.
general trends because you're gonna have three years of data to look at. So I'll add a a lot of objective under there.
Um. And I am not I guess I'm not sure if this is under your purview, but there have been questions that have come up about how we know that policies have been are being followed by staff or are being acknowledged by staff. So if we come up with a new policy, how is that being disseminated? Or how do we know about that?
So so that will that is in development. We've got we need an employee handbook. We don't have an employee handbook.
Yes, can that be a goal?
That it's already almost up, but yes.
Well, then it's an easy goal.
So that was one of the first things that Jack and I were working on when I came on the summer. I have an employee handbook.
Yeah.
But that's a good point because I know when Nancy and I talk about it, we're like.
Yeah. Yeah.
How do we know?
Yeah, teachers know. Like I I read some of the stuff and I'm thinking like, well, when I was a teacher, I don't know if that policy was there when I was a teacher, but I sure as I didn't know about that.
So I can add that, but it's almost up. I think you should just so that we get an update about it.
Yeah.
But you can check it off right away.
Yeah, like.
Exactly. I there's one other thing. I do a lot of policy work in my job and when I'm presenting or when we're lining up for approval, a huge part of it is how we're pushing this out and how we're educating people about it.
Yeah.
And what's our um educational plan.
Yeah. And so the employee handbook, just so you know, is supposed to be signed by every employee upon hiring.
So.
And then if there are addendums made, pushing that out to have signatures from every employee. So the first round when we get it, you know, stamp of approval from the exec board, that will go out to every employee and every employee will have to acknowledge that they received that, that they read that.
Right.
And that and then every new employee after that will get that same thing. And if there are big amendments that are made. on you know, big policy changes that have come up, um we'll have to add those things in there.
Right. Yeah, and then, yeah. Because it's not about how often we do policies that really fundamentally change how things have been done, but to the extent that we might need to have
Sometimes, yeah. Yep.
for that policy, sort of an educational plan or memo that goes out to staff or whatever.
Mm-hmm. A lot of times we incorporate them into training, staff training days, so some of the stuff that Doug's impacted day, we do, we actually usually take care of that during PD days.
Which is on. Yeah.
But.
You wouldn't.
Which I just don't know that, I we don't know as of what, how that works.
You had a section there about financials, right?
Yep.
Um the the I mean all how specific you're doing and stuff, but I think two big things that have been missed, obviously the audit and then um.
Yeah, completing annual audit is a good goal.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one, yeah.
And then the the um the C I P stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And um the tax and back stuff that is just on and the fact that yeah we have doing any of that stuff.
Yeah, yep, I can.
That was that was a that was a good meeting when Harold came. He was shocked that we hadn't talked, like been approached by the town about this stuff.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, the planning board or the town will usually reach out. We didn't know that they were starting the process, so.
But now, you know, you'll be looking out for that too.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a good goal, cause I think last time they were utilized, it was like the money was about to run out. And so it was like, oh no, we gotta do a project now.
Yeah.
Um so having it sort of in the sights is a good idea.
And the gym floor, I'm sure, has to be done every so many years, so that would be a good one to keep on that.
Chris has been doing that, I mean maintaining it, but.
I'm just saying, it has to be done, that's a perfect example of using them.
It's lazy.
Yeah. Yeah, so and I submitted the um proposal for the cafeteria floor, so that went in for impact fees from the, you guys voted on that last time. So that got submitted. Um yeah, are you okay if I add those as objectives? I mean, I've already got four goals, but I think if I brought in the categories a little bit, I can add some more objectives in there and.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't want you to like o- out goal yourself, but you like can.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't want you to set yourself up for failure that like you have too many objectives or things that you won't actually be able to feasibly accomplish your first year.
So I did, well, so I I made this up for years.
Well, it's just for three years. Three years, okay.
So if and I did put um some dates in here. So like I have some scaffolding dates from like January of this upcoming year or like next July or so there's dates. And so I'll clean this up and then I'll put this into the drive for next time, so you guys can see that and if there's other feedback, we're certainly open and welcome to it.
Perfect.
And I.
Yeah, but I'm next what, what was his name?
Barrett.
Barrett.
Barrett?
Barrett, yep.
Um what he was saying about having, you know, measurable goals and benchmarking and all that stuff, so.
Yep.
And I loved this idea of of every once in a while a non-public, us just meeting with you to see how you're doing, I think that's a great idea.
Yes. Absolutely.
I had not yet, I hadn't considered having a non-public.
Yeah.
Okay, uh great, thank you for preparing that.
Yep.
Uh informational items, we don't have a monthly spending report, we got it at the first meeting, I believe.
Yeah, you did, yeah, you guys get it last meeting, it was last.
The month. So we'll get one again in.
Yep.
School property law. I don't have any updates. Is this the State Road B S?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Um was there was there no um there was no correspondence to all of us? So.
There was.
I didn't see any correspondence.
About State Road? No, no, just review of course.
No, I'm just in general.
Oh, correspondence, yeah.
I I had somebody email me and it was, I I wanted to ask a couple of questions, but but it's not on what we're doing together.
Is that just the first meeting, did you look for some notes or look?
It wasn't a folder, I did look.
So. Historically, yes, we would only review, review of course, we do review of course, finds out the first business meeting.
Yeah.
Um but a lot of this stuff would have only been done at the first business meeting, and it's the second business meeting, so.
Okay, okay, wait.
It's now a little bit muddled. Um but yes, typically, but if there's something that they want, the regardless of whether it's correspondence or not, we can add it to an agenda.
I was making motion to add it, something in too.
Right.
Totally fun.
Oh, yeah, so do you wanna add a topic to the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And um so I'd like to make a motion to um add um based on the email I got for um safety all that. Based like um a uh like in like intruder or something, training.
Mm-hmm.
Um I forget what you call that, but.
Yep, that's that's right, intruder training, yeah, it's fine.
Intruder. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
It's a drill.
Yeah.
This is from the safety drills, so you wanna add safety drills to the agenda?
Yeah. Yes, yes, please.
Okay, I will second. Any discussion? Is this something that we're gonna need to take action on or is it just, okay, then we can add under informational.
Yeah.
So we'll add safety drills, if everyone approves, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So yeah, I get I just got an email about um what what the how often the staff is trained on it and what the procedure is.
Yeah, so we actually have requirements that we have to meet that are mandated by the state and federal government around the number of drills. So there's um like secure campus drills that we have to do, there's intruder drills we have to do, there's fire drills we have to do. And we have to meet a certain number of drills during the school year and we have to report that to the department of ed. So we do, we do practice those things, I don't know if you guys.
Every Monday, every month, mostly it's fire drills, but we do do an interior. Um and when I do the interior drill, I do send it out to the community before we do it
Right.
um with some resources and then after we it's you know, it's all clear. We need like the police as well to come, then usually officer, Chief Duquette will bring some patrol officers over and they will walk around and check doors and go in when it's it's a it's a great opportunity for us to see what locks. So there's been a couple of, the teacher's like, oh my gosh, I thought I walked, but it kept spinning, you know, and we wouldn't necessarily know that without um.
Yeah.
Uh so every, usually during the colder months is when we can do the indoor drills. Um we've had an emergency evacuation that we've fortunately been able to call it a drill when it was actually an actual event. Um so a a couple of years ago, my first year here, we were trained with Alice, the Alice training was done. Um we wouldn't do that with students necessarily, the and and a lot of staff have not been trained. And a lot of staff have been trained, but there are some that have not, and they've come with different training from different schools.
And that's like the active shooter type.
Yeah.
Correct. And then each um each letter stands for, it's an acronym, Alice is an acronym. Um and we've reviewed reunificate, we've reviewed things in the E O P, uh the beginning of the school year in August. We um went over the, we had updated, uh everybody has one hanging in their space, well, over there by the door. Um those are the drills that we often do, I can go get that if you guys have it on.
No, that's okay, what, the green one or?
No, the yellow, that yellow thing hanging, every teacher has a uh a little folder like that with the
Oh, okay.
And those are from the Department of Safety, from the Comanche Department of Safety that um we had printed at Staples because it's I think put onto a nicer paper, uh so it was.
And we have to submit our um emergency operation plan to the state every year, um so that goes into play, there is some materials, so part of our emergency operation plan, we actually can't share that out publicly because it contains like our emergency protocols.
Yeah. Sure, yeah.
Um so I know sometimes that comes up as a question of like, well, how do we know what their drills are or what what they're practicing? And we can't share that out of the safety of kids, like they, we can't tell the public where we're putting this during, you know, an emergency drill.
Yeah.
Um but yeah, we're, it's a very scripted requirement from the state.
So how often is that specific training, like the active shooter training?
Um we have not done an active shoot, we've done the drill, but the actual training since um my first year was two thousand eighteen, that's the last time that I know that we've done it.
Now, we've been discussing it, this has actually been a um priority area discussion for Jack and I, the other superintendent. We just met this morning with leaders regarding emergency procedures and protocols and going over some of the resources and um signing up for trainings and what do we do and um we had, one of our other schools just did use some of their professional development time last Friday to go through some emergency response and reunification plan things. So that's that is a priority of Jack and mine as well, is making sure that our safety procedures are in place. Cause I think they were kind of in different areas in different schools, so trying to align that.
So is it something that you think your staff would benefit from?
I I mean, it would always, it it, so you only have a certain number of professional days during the school year, right? Um so I know when I came, it was that, we had a, it was the last day of school, the kid or teachers it was the after the kids, the last day of kids' schools, or kids were in school, so they had professional day then. It's a teach professional day, it's based on the contract.
Well, Jack and I might be looking at when the last time each school has gone through one of those Alice trainings and we will likely come up with our own scripted, like every so many years, we want this type of training to be done.
Right.
I mean, that's not a training that you necessarily would do every year.
Right, right.
Um but Jack and I are working on coming up with like an administrator manual that will like will include when the expectation of restaff training on those big kind of trainings will be in there.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's like a cycle of that.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, yep.
Yeah.
Cause I was seeing it, we're working on that all the time.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and it, I mean, for something like that, it'll be important for budgeting, right? So like if we're planning to do an impact training, we might wanna include it in our budget for the following year or whatever, if that's what the training's gonna be.
Sometimes, yeah. Yeah, that depends, sometimes. Um we can't like commandeer their P money and tell them and force them to do a certain training unless we've like violated some form of policy.
Well, there is training, if there's a training line that I could pull that one from.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Sometimes they're free though, and sometimes there's grants they put out. Um like the Department of Safety will put grants out because they, you know, maybe they got some funding and they're like, hey, we're offering this, apply for this grant and we will come do this training for free. So sometimes there are free opportunities, which I think the last time it was free, I believe. Um then our schools done had done it, it may have been free through a Department of Safety grant, so. And those are, those come up at a regular basis, so.
It was Chief Duquette that did the training when I
Yep.
when I, that year that I that all staff participated.
Oh.
I think Alice had just not necessarily come on the on the scene, but it was catching, it was getting getting steam, so.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay.
And that that is, basically Alice training is not being a sitting duck, so if you, you know, which is came out of the Columbine tragedy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Um.
And we would, and he would work with P Ds to do that.
Yeah, so if it's been. Yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's been eight years, probably would be.
Yeah. Yeah, Jack and I are actively working on that.
Yeah, yeah, oh, so that.
Cause that is a concern, so.
And every time we do do a drill like that, like a lockdown, we'll talk about with the staff, what is this gonna look like and what could you do and what, you know?
Yeah.
And they talk to their kids about it and um.
Yeah, and any of the actus, active shooter trainings, things involve a lot of community communication to not scare anybody and
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
make sure everyone's aware of what we're doing, but um so it's definitely a a bigger effort. But it is important to cycle those things because anything can happen. So I don't ever want to think about it, but it's reality.
Right, well, that's true.
Yeah.
Awesome. Um for discussion about public comment. Discussion.
Oh. Yeah, I had asked about um adding this to the agenda a couple of weeks ago, just based on um I I just feel that it's important to you know, if to engage with the public commenters, I just, I think that um I don't, so sometimes it feels like some people, you know, they can just go up there and drop the mic and then that's it, you know, and then it's like, it's almost, yeah, we can add it for the next meeting, but it's sometimes it's like, oh, that person just said like three little things and you're not gonna like, what are you gonna put as the agenda top, three different agenda topics? Or you're gonna address that public commenter, you know, personally, like I I don't know how to go back on it, you know, um two weeks later, rather than just, you know, like the the board of selectmen meetings, it's very much just a conversation with the public commenter. And I think that it's it's just more effective that way.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between addressing things that they've said versus inviting them up and having a conversation. Um I I mean, that's not allowed per our board policy currently, so if it's a if it's a school board agenda, I um I don't think we can have just open discussions unless there's like a public forum or something per our policy or per Robert's rules or whatever uh we're using. I think I think it's helpful to be able to address certain things, but what I saw happening is that there was like hours long discussion about things that weren't on the agenda. And I think that's problematic in terms of transparency. Like we want people to be able to know the things that the boards would be deliberating about and potentially taking action about before the meeting. I think of it similar to like warrant articles, right? So when you're at a deliberative session and someone is making a motion to change a warrant article, you have to consider if it, if there's a stay at home rule. So if it would fundamentally change someone's decision to stay home that day versus would they have come if they knew that you were gonna be discussing this or making this decision? To me that we shouldn't be having robust discussion and decisions about things that aren't properly noticed. Because someone might have wanted to make a comment about it or wanted more information before he made a decision and now we're saying, actually, this wasn't on the agenda, but because this person mentioned it, now we're gonna, you know, make these crazy decisions. Like I I just.
You don't have to have make, we can uh edit the policy to not like make to make decisions or take action on something that's not on the agenda, or it's uh.
You're talking more about just having a discussion.
Right. Um and if there needs to be action, then that gets, you know, moved to an agenda item for the next meeting. But I don't, there wasn't, I don't think that there was hours long every, you know, discussion with the back and forth.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think that there's a a difference between having discussion but doing business, right? Like we're here to do business of the board and that's typically motions, policies, budget. So we could come and just have discussions about things that we're feeling frustrated about or things that we've noticed or things that we're concerned about. But that's not really doing the board's business, if that makes sense. Like we have to sort of propose something or change something or give someone a directive. It's not like, we don't have board meetings to come have like chat, just hang out and chat about frustrations, if that makes sense.
Well, no, it's addressing a public commenter, which we have two sections of public comments, so it's addressing specific comments.
Right, so I think we could address, if there's something that had to be addressed quickly, like where that's going to be on the agenda or we can add that to the agenda, but I just, I don't really see how having a long discussion about something that comes up in public comment is helping with any claim that we're not being a transparent board. Like I could, you know, see a situation where I say to a friend, hey, why don't you come make a public comment about this? And it just ramps me up to make make a motion or something or say, oh, you're right, that is a great, that is a big problem. So now we're gonna address it instead of me putting it on the agenda as as a thing.
But I think if somebody said that is a big problem, we would say that's a, that is a big problem, we agree, we'll put it on the agenda.
Right.
So we wouldn't have that discussion now, but I I mean, for me, a lot of times it's, there's such misconceptions that people say stuff that's wrong.
For sure.
And we've been like not allowed to say, well, that really isn't true because this is what we're doing. And then if it becomes a big conversation, you say, well, we're, you know, we don't have time, we'll put it on the agenda or we'll do something else late in in later to discuss this more, but I think it's more just being being able to answer questions that they have right then and there, not getting into, I agree with you, we don't wanna get into big discussions, we don't wanna make
Yeah, and I just.
decisions on things that we haven't decided to do.
Right.
But I think if I'm reading you correctly, Kenny, you're just looking for a little more flexibility to be able to talk to people about their public comments.
Right, yeah, and I I'm totally fine with having the caveat that we're not gonna make a motion on something that's on the agenda, you know. on something that's on the agenda, you know, or, you know, based on a public comment, but I just think that it just, uh, and then again, as the chair of the board, you can somebody gets out of control with what they're, that's, you know, your role to tell them, hey, like, we're gonna table this and.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what this was intended was for the board to discuss, so I would take issue with inviting them back up and having a discussion with the public commenter and having a back and forth. Um, because I think that's giving them unfair time, right, so we have three minutes to give a public comment per our policy, so if we're inviting them up now, they're potentially talking for much longer than other people. And then you get into situations where we've, we've cut off this person, now we're letting this person come up and have unlimited time. And someone could certainly accuse us of impinging their free speech because we're not allowing everyone the same amount of time.
Well, I mean, it, it has happened, like, I don't, I can't remember the lady's name, but, I mean, she, she spoke for, I actually went and reviewed it back to see how long she talked, you know, maybe cut her off, and that was one that I really wanted to say something back to because she said three different things that were not true, um, and but it was like three separate things and, but, you know, she didn't get cut off.
Right. And I, I mean, we.
And other, other people do and.
We tend, I tend to be lenient and if I'm going to be lenient, I try to be, like if there's only two people here for public comment, I will be slightly more lenient with them because we allow thirty minutes of public comments. Um, I have let, I think, every person at least once go over there a lot of the time, um, but if we let everyone do that every time, and I generally will say, if you're, you need to finish up what you're saying or make it clear that that their public comment is ending.
And even, even the, the night that Errol came up, uh, you know, for the second round of public comments and he was asking questions and you weren't responding, like, I think that that's super productive, like we actually got a lot out of that interaction, um.
I mean, and that's fine, we just have, we would have to change our policy, so the way to do it is bring forward the policy and make proposed changes to it, because we can't do it and also have the policy that says we're not doing that, you know what I mean?
Yeah. This is the first step to see.
Yep.
I just looked, I just looked it up, yeah, I mean, and I think sometimes, uh, the public comments are ones that maybe we don't want to really address because they might be,
I wish.
I mean, doesn't mean we have to address everybody either.
Right, right.
Sometimes things are just so way off base, it's not worth getting into. And other times, they're, what they're saying is perfectly okay, I don't know. I, I hear what you're saying and I agree, for, for the time I've been on this board, I've been incredibly frustrated having people come up here, like when we were doing the school choice, people come up every time and say, the people want school choice, you're not doing anything, well, we were, we were meeting with other schools, we were doing other things, but we couldn't say it because we were to, you know, we, that was our policy, we couldn't say anything, and I, I found this frustrating as heck because it just was not true. And if they stayed for the meeting, they would have heard that it wasn't true, but they weren't staying for the meeting.
But I also don't want to incentivize people to not stay, so if we answer every single question before we get to it on the agenda, then we'll just like.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't answer every single question, but I'm just saying there's times when it would be nice to put somebody straight and say,
Yeah.
we've been meeting with other schools, you know, we've been doing that, and just leave it at that, don't need to get into any more discussion, we can't really go into, you know, specifics about it because it's, because it's, right, because negotiations, but, you know, just to be able to have said that would have been really nice.
We could have talked about the negotiations, yes.
We can add those policies to the docket.
Yeah, okay, so we can.
Yeah, I, I wrote, I made a note to myself, what's the policy about it, to pull it out.
There might be more than one.
Yeah, I think there's a couple, yep, um, yeah, you'll wanna clarify though, when you're making those comments, is it during agenda item number five or are you doing it during public comment?
Yeah.
Because are you just taking notes to like?
Right.
Make note of what you wanna come back to, because that way you don't allow that back and forth.
Right.
Right, so that would be my, that's what I would propose, is not doing it during public comments and having
Right. Yeah.
the board discussion, so the board can discuss things that came up that we wanna correct or things that we wanna answer quickly, um.
Then you just open yourself up for arguments.
Correct, and I don't think that's.
We do, but, we do, but we can also take care of things sometimes too, like when we had the, the one woman who was having the transportation issue and then she came back up and then we found out that
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
it was something, I mean, we kinda took care of that, made sure she had the number, who she knew had to call, you know, whereas.
Right, but I think we should, you know, discourage that of, of them coming back up.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we kinda, she like, kinda, she kinda just did, and then I was like, I kinda felt bad, so I was like, okay,
She just jumped back, yeah. Yeah.
because I felt bad for her situation, I was like, okay, don't, don't add her.
Right.
Which is the school phrase a lot of people get into, if you don't have like a, like, it's fine if you wanna do that, but make sure you put parameters on what you're gonna do.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, and there's also things that we need to cut off in public comments, like people should not be talking about staff members or individual students in ca, if they're.
Right, you have to, yeah, that's.
There are like privacy laws about talking about individual students or things like that, and we have policies about, you know, the correct procedure for if someone has a complaint about a staff member or something like that, we shouldn't allow during public comment because that's not consistent with our policy. So, yeah, so there are just other things to keep in mind about the utility of public comments and what we can open, um, as a result of public comments. But, yeah, but let's review the policy and see what we can change or what we wanna change. Oh, that was not a non-public item?
No, I don't think so, I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Um, Jess needs to add, I guess we need to add, uh, is it informational?
Yep.
Okay. Um, an informational item about transportation. So I'll make a motion to add that, so. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so, um, this is really just kind of a heads up from Dale, is that on the week of October twenty seventh through the thirty first, Range Road in town is going to be closed to have a new culvert installed, so long story short, um, they need to essentially temporarily adjust the bus route. So I'm just giving a heads up that there will be a change in bus route, it will be temporary and it's just due to the culvert construction installation, um.
Is it only the one bus?
It will affect two buses that we have to create new routes for during the times of the road closure, um.
Okay.
Yep, we are hopeful it will be just one week, so hopefully it'll just be that short week that, I, fingers crossed, okay. We don't know how construction projects go, but, um.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna see the, the specific routes, we can get you, but it, it's so short term that it's really construction based, it's not, it's not a permanent fix that they're looking to.
I would defer to.
Yeah, it is what it is, right.
Already defer to Dale.
Right, I'm up with whatever makes sense.
Roads.
So, yeah, so I think I can just let her know that, that that's, thank you for the info and just let us know when it's done, so.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, and, and how, how are, are they responsible for notifying the parents or?
I believe they've already been in contact with Miss Wibby and there's a message being prepared to go out or will be soon.
Well.
The transportation, essentially Range Road closure.
Range Road closure.
I'm not gonna.
Okay, so maybe she's waiting to hear back from you and then she'll get that to you.
Yeah.
Um, so they'll, they'll coordinate like usual if there's any transportation, um, changes that they'll send that out to the families that are impacted.
I was gonna say, I don't think that's for another week or so.
So.
Yeah, it's for two weeks.
Yeah.
I, I was around Halloween, I don't know.
Yep, yep. Love it.
Okay.
Nothing crazy.
Uh, and then we have CIP.
Yeah, so this is just an update, um, where the facilities committee is gonna meet again, um, for the first November meeting and hopefully we'll have a tentative CIP plan adopted, um, and then eventually I'd like to fine tune that even more because I think the CIP that we kinda have is just a, is a framework, it's not really like a comprehensive CIP plan, um, that usually is a bit more detailed, um, and long term and you know, broader encompassing and works with the town and all of those, so I think this will just be a good starting point to get kind of the next ten years of big projects that we know about on the docket and for your guys' approval, um, so, now Ken won't be here for that November meeting, so um, like Missy, myself and Chris will bring that forward for the board to review, approve.
Oh. Sounds good. Um, policy, I know that the policy committee has not been. Right, so I would propose keeping all of these as a second reading.
Yeah, um, and I had a question, because the JJJ, you were going to add stuff to that, had you had the chance to do that?
Yeah. Yeah. I have not yet, I talked to Nancy, I was trying to figure out what I needed to get to, and she said the policy committee was not meeting before this meeting, so I haven't sent it to her yet.
Yeah, we haven't got, right. I mean, we haven't heard anything from anybody about those first readings for all, everything anyway, BBA, A, BBA, DFA, so I mean, yeah, I think we had already looked through it.
Well, in JJJ, the nutshell of JJJ is that when families receive EFA dollars, they no longer fall under the same like rules as homeschooling.
Right. Right. Yeah, yeah, and I, I think, um, Kendra was gonna add something about like a one point six percent charge or something like that, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Point one five.
Oh, okay, whatever it was, based on the other thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then obviously we can change it or we can not have it, um, it would just be proposed language for the board.
Okay, so we'll just not do anything with those right now, I'm bringing a second reading to the next one.
Yeah, I propose keeping them as second reading.
Okay.
Uh, public comments.
Um, I don't have any.
No public, okay. Um, we don't need non-public session, so I'm gonna make a motion to a turn. Suck it, all in favor?
Aye. It says two really long meetings in a row.
I know, I was like, I think it'll be on by eight.
I told Dan, I said, I said, I don't think it'll be too long today.
Why? That's what it's.
I thought it was nonsense. I thought it'll be too long today.